Call to order, the Greenfield City Council meeting May 17th from John Zahn Community Center and Zoom at 6:30 PM. This meeting is being recorded by the City Council and GCTV-17. If any other persons present are doing the same, if you could notify the Chair at this time. We did have one person notify us, we took note. Is there anyone else? In accordance with MGL 30A, no person shall address a meeting of the public body without permission of the Chair, and all persons shall at the request of the Chair be silent. No person shall disrupt the proceedings of a meeting of a public body. If after a clear warning from the Chair, a person continues to disrupt the proceedings, the Chair may order the person to withdraw from the meeting, and if the person does not withdraw, the Chair might authorize a Constable or other officer to remove the persons from the meeting. Roll call of members.
Counselor Golub?
Here.
President Gwynn?
Here.
Counselor Disorder?
Here.
Counselor Bottomley?
Here.
Counselor Bullock?
Here.
Counselor Gilmore?
Here.
Counselor Lapinski?
Present.
Counselor Mayo?
Here.
Counselor Healy?
Here.
Counselor Elmer?
Here.
Counselor Forgji?
Here.
Counselor Ricketts?
Present.
Counselor Toronto?
Here.
Mr. President, you have a quorum.
Thank you. If someone could make a motion to suspend the rules of procedure-
So move Ricketts.
Um, do we need to vote on that? All those in favor of suspending the rules?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Seeing none, we will suspend the rules of procedure, we'll pick up in a second. We will not be having any communications from the Superintendent, the Mayor, or other city employees this evening. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands on nation under God, in the visible liberty and justice for all.
We have no minutes to approve tonight.
Excuse me?
Counselor Ricketts.
Yes, thank you. I would just like a point of clarification. I've been seeing things about a meeting tonight and tomorrow night. What constitutes that we're coming back here tomorrow night? Like, are we going to a certain time, and if we're not done-
Yes.
-we're coming? So what is the time-
11:00 PM.
So if we're not done with everything by 11:00, we're coming back?
Correct. If we're not done by 11:00 PM, we will finish any business that's on the floor. If we're in the middle of something, it'll continue even if it turns to 11 o'clock, like if we're ready to take a vote. And then we'll pick up with that with no other business except where we left off tomorrow. The reasoning in order to do that is it has to be posted as public meeting law, five-day rule, so we can't determine on the day to hold a meeting the next day. I have to determine the week before that we might need the day. So, that's the only way to do it.
Thank you so much.
We are going to move right on to public comment. I'm going to ask the Clerk to grab that sheet, and while they're doing that, I just want to talk a little bit about public comment this evening. Public comment is normally three minutes per person. We decided and posted that this would be two minutes this evening, and once again in a way to get us to the business of the night a little more quickly. As you know, I let everyone talk, and I let everyone talk, and I get glared at because I don't cut you off when your beeper goes off. Tonight, I would like to stay till two minutes and keep everybody there. We'll also have people that have signed up via Zoom. So, we recognize Greenfield residents first, and then non-residents at the end after Greenfield residents have spoke. Pete Brown, when you come forward, if you could state your name and your address for the record.
Pete Brown, 24 James Street here in Greenfield. I will do my best to keep this to two minutes. The Mayor has told us that the budget is complicated, that the schools are adequately funded, and that the budget needs to balance the needs of all the departments in the city. I will say to you what I said to the Mayor, which is that I don't need a lecture, and I don't think any of you do either, about the complexities of municipal finance. I think we all understand that the budget is complicated, that there are difficult decisions to be made, that those decisions have consequences, and that we need to follow the law. Number two, I would suggest that a budget that will result in the loss of multiple critical positions at the schools, and departments, and programs in the schools can hardly be characterized as adequate. Third, and with no disrespect to any of the departments around the city, the budget is not about showing how much we value those departments or the people in them, it is about setting our priorities as a community and funding them accordingly. I have a nine-year-old, he is heading into fifth grade at the middle school next year. We are excited, he's excited, he's a little bit nervous. He loves school, he loves his teachers, he loves playing sports, and he's looking forward to continuing to play the cello, which he learned in the Strings for Kids program. When I look at the budget that the Mayor has submitted, I have serious concerns about what his experience at the middle school is going to be like. I don't get the sense I'm the only one. I don't think we're the only family in Greenfield having this conversation. We, as a community, have underfunded our schools for years. The budget that the Mayor has submitted is only going to dig that hole deeper. It's going to make the situation for our kids and our teachers in the schools worse, it's going to drive families out of Greenfield, it's going to drive teachers out of Greenfield-
Thank you.
...fund the budget. Thank you.
And once again, if I do stop you at two minutes, it's not a personal opinion, it's policy this evening to keep us on track.
Vern Sund, 81 Barton Road, Greenfield, Mass. I've been a resident here in Greenfield for 75 years, and this is the first time that I have seen where the Mayor's going to cut the budget so far, and so hurt the kids so much. And I just feel that we as a town, city, know how to do it better sometimes. It's not that I don't have experience on the Town Council because I was there four years, and so I know what you guys are going through, and it's hard to make a decision. And I just hope that the right way is made possible, so our kids that are coming into Greenfield will have something to look forward to it, instead of come for special things and they can't get it, and they have to go to another school. So that shortens on kids that'll grow up in Greenfield like I did. And I ran track since I was in sixth grade, and it's just too bad the possibility of the Mayor cutting this out, and the kids need it. So I just want to say what I had to say, and good luck.
Shane Toomey, Shane, followed by Stella.
My name is Shane Toomey, I'm a resident of Greenfield on 24 Rangeley Road and a student of Greenfield High School. I'm here to address your discussion of the FY '24 operating budget, and on top of that, my message is for Mayor Weidergardner. That message comes on behalf of the students of Greenfield High School and the Greenfield Public Schools when I express the need to fully fund the schools. Historically, our schools have functioned in an underfunded capacity. As we approach this coming year, it seems as though nothing has changed. Our schools are receiving significantly smaller increases than the surrounding departments and face drastic cuts in comparison to these departments. Districts in the surrounding area are putting far more attention to the budgetary needs of their schools, and as a result, we're losing both staff and students to these districts. All of this is pushing short-sighted solutions to be made that will only serve to push us off this budgetary cliff in the future. As we are going into the coming year with a need for money, the schools once again are met with a lack thereof. While the Mayor claims this is due to a decline in enrollment and rise in costs, that would not explain the stall in our increase. According to DESI, in the year of '22 to '23, Greenfield had an attrition rate of 13.2%, roughly 3% higher on average than years past, and Greenfield reportedly lost 5.2% of its students solely in grades nine through 12 in the year of '21 to '22. With that being the case, we should be seeking to increase the money put into our schools to broaden our opportunities to keep students and draw more in. Instead, we are caught in a cycle of underenrollment both feeding into and being funded, or fueled by underfunding. To address this decline, schools need to be held on an equal standard as other town departments. While other departments in towns such as police and fire will see around 10% increases to the budget, DPW seeing 6.2, all of which nearly equal to their proposed budgets, schools will only see 3. All departments in town, especially those previously mentioned, are crucial to the community, but so are the schools. They should not be forced to suffer most of all. It is possible to make a turnaround and shift focus on the schools, but to do so, we need to be properly funded to recover from the precarious situation that we are in. Thank you.
Thank you. Stella Verlander, followed by Jean Wall.
My name is Stella, I live at 18 Pond Street in Greenfield, Massachusetts. Hello, City Councilors, my name is Stella Verlander, and I'm a citizen of Greenfield and a sophomore at Greenfield High School. I've also been in the Greenfield Public School Districts my entire life. I'm here to speak on the budget cuts to the Greenfield Public School system. Education is the base for humanity and how we thrive in a community. It is essential that all students in Greenfield have what they need to thrive in school. Like Shane said, according to DESI, we have a 13.2 attrition rate. That's really high, especially for the surrounding areas. Things like cutting electives is what makes students unmotivated to come to school and either drop out or switch schools. Cuts will further increase our attrition rate. People looking to move into Greenfield to start a family look at things like this, too. People can be turned away from the prospect of moving here because of how our schools look. A successful and well-supported school reflects on a prospering town. Every year, we lose more and more student enrollment. This year, our total enrollment was 1,446. Pre-COVID, that number was 1,732. That is a significant loss, and with budget cuts, that gap might continue to get larger and larger. Students choice out to other schools in the area, which in turn means we lose money. So it should be clear that a way to solve this issue is by making our schools an ideal place to be in. It is necessary that people want to continue sending their children here, and that educators want to continue working here. If we add back the 1.1 million back into the budget, things can slowly but surely improve. If we continue adding back money every year, I guarantee our schools and town will thrive. The issue of budget cuts is not a fixed problem. I urge you to add back the 1.1 million into the school budget because this is a change that is greatly needed, and we need funding. Thank you for your time.
Jean Wall, followed by Jocelyn.
Jean Wall, 301 Countryside. Before moving to Greenfield, I sold real estate for 21 years in the Washington DC area. I worked with people from all over the world, many of whom had never lived in that area. Most Realtors at that time limited the scope of their sales to a small geographic area. I decided not to do that. I was licensed in Virginia, Maryland, and in Washington DC, so I could show newcomers all the options available when choosing their family's home. Schools often became the primary selection criteria. At that time, few people wanted to live in Washington DC, although it would cut an hour or more off their commuting time, and they would get a much larger house. The reason? Schools were unacceptable. The people wanted to live in North Arlington, or McLean in Virginia, Chevy Chase, Bethesda, or Potomac in Maryland. In the other towns or cities, they could get a much larger house or more land, but schools were what they were buying. Schools are the economic driver for a city. Here in Greenfield, I volunteer at the hospital every week. We have a very difficult time at the hospital retaining doctors. I have been told by the staff that doctors don't want to move their families here because they don't think the schools are good. I thank the Council for what you've already, the Ways and Means, for what you've already done toward increasing the funding for the schools. Schools are the economic driver for the city, and you're making a huge mistake by cutting the funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Jocelyn, followed by Andrew.
Jocelyn Cozo, I live at 31 Madison Circle here in Greenfield. First, I want to thank the members of the Ways and Means Committee for your thorough and thoughtful examination of and recommendations for changes to the fiscal year '24 budget. To all our Council members, it is my sincere hope that you approve these changes. The school's budget request for a fiscal year '24 was already pared down. It's a necessity in a lean year, but it's really hard to see when our kids and teachers are already struggling. The Mayor's proposed budget grossly underfunds our schools even further, a decision I find baffling. Schools are the backbone of a community. Families stay in areas with high-quality public educations, ones that include opportunities to learn languages, a variety of electives, and ones where the teachers have experience and are able to stay for more than a year. And families leave those that are underfunded. While schools are always my number-one priority, it is also my hope that the final budget includes sufficient funding for staffing for our new library building. A well-funded library is also a clear message of support to families. Please fund our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew.
Hello, my name is Andrew Varnan, I live at 108 Maple Street in Greenfield. I'm here with my shirt on, teach at the Greenfield Middle School, but I would invite you to think of me as a spy for you on the inside. I had two school-aged kids, neither of them are currently attending the Greenfield Public Schools, and I've lived here for 20 years, I'm a taxpayer, and I'm not asking you to put money in my pockets. In fact, my administration has told me that I will not be teaching at the Greenfield Middle School next year. So, I'm here to advocate for my colleagues, who are superheroes, and they're doing an amazing job, but they're not getting the support they need. I was on a bus to Boston yesterday, and I went around to talk to legislators and senators and to tell them that they needed to do what they could to make sure that the Fair Share Amendment that we worked to pass out here in Western Massachusetts would come back out here to help us out with this problem. And over and over again, we talked about the importance of schools, and we talked about how the lack of money means that students that I teach right now, they're not really, we are struggling to give them, is the more charitable way of putting it, the support that they're mandated by law to get. I have EL students and Special Ed students, and these are the ones that are, they're not going to leave, they're not going somewhere else. These are the students who are ultimately going to be left behind, and we need to, it is our responsibility as a community to make sure that every student here in Greenfield can get the education that they deserve. These are the people who are going to stick around, and they're going to be here in the future. So, I think we need to make that investment in these people now.
Aaron? Aaron? Yep. Sorry. Then followed by Pamela Goodwin.
Hi, I am Erin Anhall, I live at 111 Beacon Street. I have written to all of you several times, I've been here before, I've been at the Ways and Means Committee. My family and I just moved here from Maryland in January of this year. My husband retired from the Navy in November of 2020, and as a Navy family, we've literally lived all over the country, and we have seen so many communities and schools that have been chronically underfunded, and we have seen how that underfunding destroys communities and makes it incredibly hard to rebuild them. As I've shared with you via email, there are so many studies out there that have shown over and over and over again that properly funding public schools is the number-one most important thing that a community can do to lower crime, lower suicide rates, and raise revenue in the community as it provides more people who are going to start businesses, who are going to stay in the community, who are going to be working. These things are so important to build the community that we want. With the dramatic increase in remote work since the advent of COVID, more and more people are choosing where they want to live based on the schools, the community, and the family life versus the proximity to their job, and in fact, that's why we came here, because we were living in Southern Maryland, and five years ago, my friend's daughter was shot and killed at our high school in a mass shooting, and the community there responded by cutting school funding and increasing police budgets. And you know what happened? Jobs left, crime increased, suicide rates increased, addiction rates increased, and the community in five short years has gone downhill so much. And since COVID happened, we know so many people who are middle and high-income earners in that county who have left for places that are better funding, which is causing an even larger revenue crisis. And we know that this school funding issue is going to continue into next year as well. If we are driving people away, it will continue, it will get worse-
Pamela Goodwin?
...and it has to end now. We need to vote for the budget that funds the schools.
Followed by David.
I always thank you people for all your hard work. I know that it is just torturous, and I come as often as I can, so you've heard me talk many, many times. So this will be repeating a few things. I came here as a teacher in 1971, when I was Greenfield Junior High, long before it became a middle school. I also taught at Greenfield High School in the summer program at Risk Kids. I later resigned as a teacher from this district and was hired by a banker to co-teach at-risk children at the Greenfield High School, and also Matt Stinson, who bought a house here and was a young teacher, and that year, they axed his job, and that program was gone. So we all know that students come and go, the birth rate is down, we're going to be always juggling whether we have enough kids or too many kids. My son-in-law's an AP teacher, they cut a lot of teachers, and he had a lot of kids in his classroom. I think I used to have 32, 33. I had some aides coming in because we had, you know, children who were in special needs who also came into my classrooms. So, I again am going to encourage you to do the best you can for the school budget. I do think that this is the future of the town, it's the future of the nation. We talked about well-rounded children, make well-rounded adults. They need music, they need sports, they axed my foreign language department a long, long time ago, and those are the kinds of things that get cut. It's not just about reading, writing, and arithmetic, and we all know that. So, we've heard these people come and beg, and it's a shame. I also don't want to listen to the Mayor make excuses all the time. I don't want you people to have to defund or undercut the Police Department or the DPW Department. I'm going to use the analogy of the Governor-
Thank you. David?
If you don't have money, you can't do it. It's a pie that has to be divided. Thank you. Fund the schools.
Followed by Rachel.
Dave in Moscarito, Old Country Road. I agree with everything that everybody behind me just said with respect to funding the schools. My children went through the school department, but I'm here to talk about public safety because I'm a public safety commissioner. I'm asking you to fund the Fire Department and the Police Department. As a member of the Fire Department Building Committee, I've worked with the Fire Department over the past three years, getting to know Chief Strahan and many of the firefighters. We all know his dedication to his men in the city of Greenfield. They never question the danger, they just respond and do the job. I'm starting to build a relationship with the Police Departments. I took part in the hiring process for the COPS grant, the department followed their process and procedures, they hired a diverse group of new officers that we can be proud of, that will be the face of Greenfield in the future. I joined several ride-alongs with officers to get to learn what they do. Recently, Officer Jedediah Henry on a midnight shift saved a man's life that tried to take his own life. He carried this gentleman outside of the house waiting for the ambulance, and they got this person to the hospital on time, and they said that the man was saved because of the time. I asked Officer Henry, "How do you debrief from something like that?" He said, "Sometimes, you just can't. You need to move on to the next call or the next shift." Officer Tim Dooley and his crew have taken thousands of bags of drugs off the streets of Greenfield. The numbers are staggering. His life goal is to ensure no Greenfield child or young adult has a chance to come in contact with drugs. I believe sometimes we take our first responders for granted, only dealing with them as line items on paper. We expect them to be machines, forgetting that they have personalities, feelings, they get tired, they get frustrated, and they have an enormous amount of stress. I drove the midnight shift. While we're all sleeping comfortably in our beds, the officers are checking businesses, parking lots, neighborhoods, welfare checks, and people roaming around Greenfield. I'd ask you to think about all this and support the Fire and Police Departments in Greenfield. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Followed by Doug. And remember, state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Rachel Cronin Townsend. I live at 51 Madison Circle here in Greenfield. I have been a teacher here in Greenfield since the last century. Yeah, I started in the 1990s. I took maternity leave from the Greenfield Public Schools. I sent my children to the Greenfield Public Schools, two of whom graduated, one as valedictorian, one as salutatorian. I am proud of my children, I am proud of the education they received here, and I am proud that I was part of that. And I cannot even tell you how many times I have sat here in front of you on the verge of tears, because I don't feel respected for all the work that I do here in this town. I was late because I volunteered 10 hours a week at the Energy Park producing Shakespeare. Did you know that? Free Shakespeare in Greenfield, because a teacher in Greenfield thinks that's important. So, I'm not going to take my two minutes, I'm not going to appeal, I'm not going to give you all the facts that you all already know, but I am sick and tired of begging you to take- But I am sick and tired of begging you to take care of my people. It's not okay. Thank you very much.
Doug, Doug Selwyn. And then I'm going to switch to online for a few minutes.
Good evening. Want to think back for a few minutes or for a couple of minutes.
Name and address, I'm sorry, Doug.
Oh, I'm sorry. Doug Selwyn, 38 Forest Avenue, Greenfield. Think back a couple of years ago when we were in the middle of COVID and what it was like to have kids trying to deal with school, to have teachers trying to deal with kids through screens, six- and seven-year-olds online trying to learn. It was chaos. And families were struggling to stay alive, to keep food on the table, to deal with loss and isolation and trauma and uncertainty and fear. And then remember how it was the first year back for students and teachers. It was chaos. It was difficult. We had everyone concerned trying to remember how to be in a room with each other, how to deal with each other while in the same room, how to learn together, how to deal with frustrations, disagreements, all the rest of the human interactions after a couple of years away from that. And how would we meet the academic, social, and emotional needs of our children and our educators as we continued going forward through COVID? Well, here we are. We've had a year of starting to remember how to do school in person. We've made a lot of progress this year, and it's still been very, 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 very difficult. It's time where you get to decide this year how we move forward from here. You have the opportunity to make sure that kids and teachers have programs that they can continue to develop. And we have teachers on staff to help the kids continue to make progress. The Ways and Means Committee has done extraordinary work to find the money needed to keep programs and teachers, maybe even hire a position or two that currently is not filled. After decades of underfunding by both the state and by the city, and by the damage that COVID brought to our schools, we have a chance to continue to climb out of that hole, to make progress, to not fall back.
Thank you.
It comes down to making a choice about where to invest our resources, and I hope you will choose to invest resources in our children, our schools, and the future.
We're switching to online. Max, Max Belcher.
Good evening. My name is Max Belcher and I live at 24 Church Street. I'm speaking on behalf of myself and also for my wife, Ellie Mandel. I have two issues to comment on. The first one, both of us have a disability, environmental illness, that prevents us from spending time in public places. There are city sanctioned meetings that we would like to attend, but we are unable to go to in-person meetings. I would like to encourage the city council to work towards an ordinance where citizens such as the two of us could request that specific meetings be remote or hybrid. Many people may not be as disabled as we are, or may not be disabled at all, but would still prefer attending these meetings remotely as a matter of convenience rather than medical necessity. So this would be a way to increase public participation in our local government generally if people knew that they could request that a meeting be hybrid and their request would be fulfilled. The second issue I have is somewhat related to the first one. Currently, meetings on the city calendar on the website have spotty coverage, meaning there is incomplete inclusion of all of the materials referenced in the meetings. I mean items such as full agenda, prior meeting minutes, and any and all materials that will be discussed at the meeting. Can I encourage more of a best practices approach where the various boards, commissions, and committees move towards posting all such items to the calendar on the website along with the meeting notice? This will encourage informed citizen awareness and participation. That is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Rafi Wallman. Rafi?
Rafe Wallman, 60 Devon Street in Greenfield. Hi, I'm one of the Strings for Kids teachers and maybe a future Greenfield Public Schools parent, although I'm not, I'm not sure. I have a four-year-old daughter here. And so as you might imagine, I'm strongly in favor of a fully funded school budget, which includes funding for our program, which is just the tip of the iceberg, and there are many others that are essential in the school system. And I wish I was here saying that we should continue to fund a full-time public school strings teacher, even though that might make my job irrelevant, or that we should fund elementary school chorus, or maintain the funds necessary to support several very experienced and beloved full-time music and band teachers in the elementary and middle schools. Unfortunately, those things are not funded currently, and those beloved teachers have left the system because of lack of support. Just in the few years that I have been coming part-time into the schools, I've seen several very beloved, high-quality music teachers leave. And I'm just seeing the music side. And I would like to see this town and public school system go the other direction and start to fund more music in the schools. Not because that's really important for kids to improve their math and reading skills, but that is definitely true, that music will, you know, music education is hugely beneficial for all these other things, but music education in itself is part of a well-rounded education. I want people to imagine what it would be like to have chorus and band and strings and general music, not with a different sub every two weeks, which seems to be what's happening currently in the schools, and what that would do for the quality of education in the town, and frankly, what that would do for the long-term public safety of the town, because then we're dealing with a populous, you know, population of kids and adults who are happier.
Thank you, Rafe.
Well-rounded, better educated. Thank you very much.
Ella? Ella Condon. Ella?
Can you hear me?
I can.
Hello, Ella Condon, Precinct 8. I want to put my full support behind the Ways and Means Committee's recommendation of allocating funds to our public schools, but I also want to talk about a different part of the operating budget. Every time the police department has faced budget cuts, inevitably someone brings up domestic violence and uses that as support for the police department. I want to point out that there is, the mayor has a task force against domestic violence that has been getting $800 a year, but this year is being cut down to $500 a year. And I just wish we would invest in things outside of the police that actually help the community, especially considering we have three active officers with rape and domestic violence complaints against them. And I just really wish we would do better and invest better in other areas of our community besides the police so that we could have a better and safer community. Thank you.
Eve?
Great, thank you. Eve, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Eve Bogdanow, Shattuck Street here in Greenfield. I'm a parent of a kid who went to the Greenfield Public Schools and a social worker, long-term therapist in the community. And I'd like to just read a letter that I wrote to the city council. "Thank you all for your continued vigilance and effort to create an equitable, not equal, but equitable budget across all the city departments at a time when traditionally female jobs, teachers, and caregivers are asked to do more with less again and again and without fanfare or adequate protest, the consequence of which is harmful not only to these individuals and their families, but also to the kids they serve. As above, so below. It's unsustainable and irresponsible policy to continue to overvalue traditionally male labor, cops, who have far more resources and do not have to hold fundraisers for the basic needs to do their work. They don't have to pull from their personal wallets to cover their basic needs. It is embarrassing to the city that the chief still has his job and is supported by the mayor and his department's unbashed entitlement to publicly tantrum, act out on social media, and frequently overstate the volume of criminal activity within the city to garner sympathy and divide the citizens. It is undermining to citizens' confidence and creates a culture of fear and division when we need to be working together. Everybody needs the proper support. We're asking for equitable support. The schools have been defunded systematically across the US, across Massachusetts, and also in Greenfield for years. And we're seeing the impact of that in terms of mental health, substance abuse, poverty, child abuse, because this is what happens when people are not getting their basic needs met. So we need cops for criminal activity and stop asking them to solve the violent consequences of poverty and the impact of inadequate funding in schools and community programs. That would help improve the quality of their work life so they can focus on the most dangerous issues facing our city, which we do have, and feel appropriately appreciated and acknowledged and supported for their hard work and personal risks in policing. If we support all the departments, then the cops can do their jobs and not all the social worker and teacher jobs. I'm asking for your continued efforts to support an equitable budget. It is the right thing to do. It's not only right, it's fair and responsible."
Thank you.
Oh, okay. All right. Thanks very much, everybody.
Thank you. No, thank you. Steve, we're going to go back to the room. Steve O'Halloran. Steve. Followed by Laura.
I'm Steve O'Halloran, 17 Vermont Street. To educate is to inspire, is to present a vision of how change and enrichment, understanding, and enjoyment can occur. Music, arts, foreign languages, sports, all of these things create inspiration. We need inspiration, and we need to focus on that to provide for a vision for our children, but for everyone. Everyone knows we have struggles in the world. Shall we have a more creative attitude to move forward? Please fund the education budget and entertain new vision. Thank you.
Laura?
Laura Wodolowski, I'm at 191 Conway Street, and I'm the parent of two kids, one who graduated from the school system recently and another who's eighth grader and still enjoying the school system. So I really appreciate the work of the Ways and Means Committee. You guys did some miracles to help bring back the school budget from the cuts the mayor had suggested, and I urge you all to support the Ways and Means and maybe bump it up even a little more further schools. The work, programs like the Strings for Kids are so critical for our kids. My oldest started in as a second grader, and this is a program that provides violins, cellos for kids who wouldn't ordinarily be able to have instruments like that. This is something that gets to equity. My kids are both really different kids, one who loved theater and music, and at one point, because of being accelerated, we were looking at the private schools and didn't think the public schools were going to be able to meet our needs. And it was because of the theater programs and other things like chorus in the high school that she stayed in and is now going to a really fantastic college next year. My youngest kid, sports. She discovered volleyball this year, and that is keeping her engaged in the schools. So we need to make sure that it's not just about the academics, but having these other enrichment programs for our kids. We know that there are a lot of losses because of COVID, and by defunding our schools, we're not going to be able to make up for that lost ground. These kids are our future business owners and our workforce, and if we don't invest in them now, we're de-investing in our community. So I urge you all to please support our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Jesus.
Hi, Jesus Leva, 32 High Street. In 1993, our state school foundation budget for Greenfield was the same as our actual school spending. Today, there's a 20% difference. This is entirely as a result of declining state school aid in proportion to the increases in local education costs. Regardless of what city council does tonight, next year we will have at a minimum of a $2 million shortfall. That money does not exist locally. If we do not bring the same energy to the state legislature that we are bringing tonight, the school budget will be unreconcilable next year. I hope you will follow our local school committee's efforts to address the state funding issues after this meeting tonight. Our state budget can afford to fully fund sending tuition costs for all cities in Massachusetts. That would mean an additional $4 million for Greenfield Public Schools. We need to be able to reach out and join other communities in the state with the same education funding issues and get it done.
Thank you. Emily?
Hello, my name is Emily Ballard. I am a mother and I live on Glenn Brook Drive, Precinct 1. So I know it's not cool to admit that we want people to be nice to us and to openly admit that we want to feel connected and understood, and yet it's actually something that almost all of us deeply want and are too afraid to ask for. Schools offer, when they're resourced well, a breeding ground for curiosity and understanding and for the naturally occurring compassion that lives in us when we're young. I want to live in a city that actively cares about whether or not people are being curious and kind to each other and to send my two children to a place where they get to live among those values every day. Fully funded schools support these values and therefore our collective humanity. It's not enough for us to feed our kids the rhetoric that community matters and that their community cares about them when the actual, real 3D community, AKA us, is showing them the opposite. What is it we learned in school about telling a compelling narrative? Show me, don't tell me? Underfunding our schools shows our kids that they are not being chosen by the community. Kids who don't feel valued grow up to become adults who feel they have to prove something by exerting power over others. We have such a beautiful opportunity here to show each other and our kids what we care about. Please fully and adequately fund our public schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Stonely?
We are Stonely Burnham Students. I'm Zinnia. This is Juliana, and this is Luisa, 574 Berniston Road.
First, we would like to say that we fully support the Greenfield Public Schools. Greenfield City Councilors, we would like to thank you first for considering a proposal for a 28th constitutional amendment. We are Stonely Burnham Students here in Greenfield, and we would like to propose the city of Greenfield support a resolution written by Stephen "Bathory" Peeler, a resident of GIL. Resolution is on the GIL annual town meeting warrant for this year.
The text of the proposed amendment is as follows. Section 1, "We, the people, have compelling sovereign interests in representative self-government, federalism, the integrity of the electoral process, and the political equality of natural persons." Section 2, "Nothing in this constitution shall be construed to forbid Congress or the states within their respective jurisdictions from reasonably regulating and limiting contribution..." within their respective jurisdictions from reasonably regulating and limiting contributions and expenditures in campaigns, elections, or ballot measures. Section 3, Congress and the states shall have the power to implement and enforce this article by appropriate legislation and may distinguish between natural persons and juridical persons, including by prohibiting juridical persons from raising and spending money in campaigns, elections, or ballot measures. The motion is as followed.
This is not a politically left or right issue. By granting corporations personhood, the government is allowing powerful entities to undermine our democracy by giving these entities with financial resources the ability to drown out the voices of ordinary citizens. Money is power, and to not recognize that power in the face of inequality is a disservice to the majority. Corporations are not natural persons and have specific benefits granted to them by we the people, such as corporate charters and limited liability. These public benefits are granted with the understanding that these entities act in the interest of the general public. This amendment would return power to Congress and the states to reasonably regulate and limit contributions and allows them to distinguish between living persons and non-human entities. Thank you for your time and consideration.
And just for my counsel, they were going to come to speak to us with this resolution in full form next month, but they are all gone by the time we meet next month. So they did come tonight, and I thank them for being concise and getting that done. Thank you for joining us. Wendy Goodman on Zoom.
I'm getting there. Wendy Goodman, Greenfield, Greenfield. First, as always, thank you all for your service. You are being called above and beyond. I also want to acknowledge that there is so much wisdom in this room. I'm inspired, I'm moved, I'm honored. I agree with everything that's been said. And I'm just going to say, I was raised with the value that education was the most, the highest priority. That's what you had to get, because once you had education, you could think freely, you could explore possibilities, doors would be open, you created the future that you want to create. To me, as the first person that spoke, what we're talking about is a question of priorities. Who do we want to be as a city, as a town, as a community? To me, it's not about, oh, the kids that are in school now. Yes, it's their future, but it's our future, it's the future. And what do we want to be known for, and who do we want to be? My stake is only in the future. I have no children in the school, but I believe that by really funding the schools, we create the future that will serve everybody. So clearly, we all are in the same place. To me, and this, again, it's not about preference, it's about priority, I would rather see longer grass and fewer trash pickups. And how do we get down to the nitty-gritty to make sure that our priorities are for everyone to be able to achieve and contribute with their fullness of being that can only be achieved through education and public education? So thank you for your service, thank you for this community, and I trust that we will move through this and make the right decisions.
Thank you. And that was Wendy, not Eve, just so if you're looking at my screen. I believe that is the end of public comment this evening, and we are going to move on to our first motions business. Counselor Disorgar, if you could read the public hearing notice.
Appropriate $750 from CPA reserved for open--
Page six.
Page six, sorry.
It's all right.
That looks better.
Thank you.
Public hearing. In accordance with Home Rule Charter, the Greenfield City Council will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, May 17th, at 6:30 p.m. at the John Zahn Community Center, 35 Pleasant Street, and via Zoom. Meeting ID 93909109210 to receive public input on the following. Appropriate $750 from CPA reserved for open space to fund the Greenfield High School track ADA access. Appropriate $75,500 from CPA undesignated to fund the Beacon Park Improvements Project. Appropriate $22,226.31 from CPA undesignated to fund citywide outdoor site amenities. Appropriate $47,523.69 from CPA reserved for community housing and $52,476.31 from CPA undesignated. $100,000 total to be provided for the CSO Well Street Shelter Expansion Project. Appropriate $31,023.69 from CPA reserved for historic resources for the FCAS Barn Rehabilitation. Appropriate $15,000 from CPA reserved for open space to fund the Highland Park Trail Restoration Project. Appropriate $15,500 from CPA reserved for historic resources for the Historical Society Document Preservation Project. Appropriate $1,000 from CPA reserved for historic resources to the Museum of Our Industrial Heritage, MOIH. Appropriate $7,773.69 from CPA reserved for open space and $42,226.31 from CPA undesignated. $50,000 total for the Greenfield Pickleball Court Expansion Project. Appropriate $24,000 from CPA reserved for open space to fund the Shattuck Park Fitness Cluster. Fiscal year 2024 operating budget, six orders. Appropriate $61,627,584 for the fiscal year 2024 general fund budget. Appropriate $100,000 by transfer from Fund 8406, OPEP stabilization, to reduce the fiscal year 2024 general fund operating budget raise from $61,327,584 to $61,227,584. Appropriate $2,231,889 for the fiscal year '24 Water Enterprise Fund. Appropriate $3,404,557 for the fiscal year '24 Sewer Enterprise Fund. Appropriate $2,431,535 for the fiscal year '24 G-SET Enterprise Fund. Establish spending limits on revolving funds not to exceed $695,967. The city council may consider the same on Wednesday, May 17th, at 6:30 at the John Zahn Community Center, 35 Pleasant Street, and via Zoom. Meeting ID number 93909109210. Materials can be obtained from the clerk's office, 14 court square, from 9 to 4, Monday to Friday, or by phone, 413-772-1555, extension 6163. Dan Gwynn, Greenfield City Council.
Thank you. I will open the public hearing at 7:30 p.m. Jesus, are you wishing to speak on this? After you.
Jesus Leva, 32 High Street. I'm asking the city council to reduce the proposed line item salary of the Greenfield Police Department by $175,000 to represent the salary of Greenfield Police Chief Hague. If the concern is police staffing, terminate Chief Hague's employment, restore the funding after he is gone, and use the $175,000 to hire two new patrol officers and provide a raise to the officer who would assume responsibility of acting chief. It's been a year at this point since the city council tried to send a clear message regarding the 2022 canon verdict, partially by defunding the police department by $425,000 by a vote of no confidence concerning Chief Hague. The mayor and chief of police have failed to attempt to reconcile these issues despite a year to consider a substantive response. In 2013, when Chief Hague assumed responsibility of the Greenfield Police Chief, a previous chief had a public complaint filed against him with the state agency. Public trust in the Greenfield Police Department was low, and the Greenfield Police Department was in the midst of a public lawsuit. It's 2023. Chief Hague has a public complaint filed against him with the state agency, signed by over 100 residents and a majority of city council. Public trust in the Greenfield Police Department is at an all-time low, and the Greenfield Police Department is in the midst of an even more public lawsuit. Look around you. We're not surrounded by other communities with publicized lawsuits against the police departments. Our police department functioned adequately in the summer of 2022 under Acting Chief Gordon while Chief Hague was on his leave of absence. Fear cannot be the basis for funding Chief Hague's salary, and there is nothing to justify that fear. And should the mayor and chief Hague hide behind the firing of junior officers to try and preserve Chief Hague's employment, that action is not on city council, that is an administrative choice, an administrative choice that could have easily been avoided if the mayor, police chief, or Public Safety Commission had even the slightest inclination to reconcile the deep divide on public safety caused by circumstances arising from Chief Hague and the mayor's executive decisions. Thank you.
I have no one else on the public hearing list. I will close the public hearing at-- Counselor Disorgar.
I have a comment for the financial director on the Sewer Enterprise Fund. I added the numbers, and I think that the total is off on this. I think that the total for the Sewer Enterprise Fund should be $3,389,557. And I don't know how that affects the reading of that. I read it, and I had just added it a little bit before coming today.
We can't increase, just so we know that. Does the finance director have an answer to that?
Point of order, we're in the middle of a public hearing.
Yeah. I was almost closing the public hearing, and we'll bring this back. While that's being looked at, I'd like to close the public hearing at 7:34 p.m. All right. Second readings, Counselor Disorgar.
Appropriate $750 from CPA reserved for open space to fund the Greenfield High School track ADA access. Appropriate $75,500 from CPA undesignated to fund the Beacon Park Improvements Project. Appropriate $22,226.31 from CPA undesignated to fund citywide outdoor site amenities. Appropriate $47,523.69 from CPA reserved for community housing and $52,476.31 from CPA undesignated. $100,000 total to be provided for the CSO Well Street Shelter Expansion Project. Appropriate $31,023.69 from CPA reserved for historic resources for the FCAS Barn Rehabilitation. Appropriate $15,000 from CPA reserved for open space to fund the Highland Park Trail Restoration Project. Appropriate $15,500 from CPA reserved for historic resources for the Historical Society Document Preservation Project. Appropriate $1,000 from CPA reserved for historic resources to the Museum of Our Industrial Heritage, MOIH. Appropriate $7,773.69 from CPA reserved for open space and $42,226.31 from CPA undesignated. $50,000 total for the Greenfield Pickleball Court Expansion Project. Appropriate $24,000 from CPA reserved for open space to fund the Shattuck Park Fitness Cluster. Fiscal year 2024 operating budget, six orders. Appropriate $61,627,584 for the fiscal year 2024 general fund budget. Appropriate $100,000 by transfer from Fund 8406, OPEP stabilization, to reduce the fiscal year 2024 general fund operating budget raise from $61,327,584 to $61,227,584. Appropriate $2,231,889 for the fiscal year Water Enterprise Fund. Appropriate $3,404,557 for the fiscal year Sewer Enterprise Fund. Appropriate $2,431,535 for the fiscal year '24 G-SET Enterprise Fund. Establish spending limits on revolving funds not to exceed $695,967.
Thank you. All right, we're going to go into motions, orders, and resolutions. Let me just remind the public earlier about speaking. I'm just going to remind the counselors. This evening, I'll recognize everybody for the first time to speak. Once everyone has gotten a chance to speak the first time, I will then recognize people for the second time. So I just ask that if you're going to be speaking tonight, just try to have your thoughts and opinions for the initial recognition. Second of all, if I'm talking to a committee chair, please don't confuse their reading of the information as their time to speak. They're acting as my chair at that point. And for that same reason, I would like to distinguish that with my chairs, that if you're reading that, you're reading the opinion of your committee, not your personal opinion, which you can then bring back later. So when you read your opinion from your committee, it's the committee opinion, and when you come back to talk to me, it's your opinion based on what the committee brought forward. So we don't overlap those two. And then I will recognize everybody. I'm going to start with Counselor Elmer. Motion for reconsideration.
They say that no good deed goes unpunished. Since I made this, since I've made this motion for reconsideration, I've been asked to withdraw it by the police department, so I'd like to do that now.
Okay, do we need to act on that?
I'm withdrawing the motion.
You're withdrawing the motion?
Yep.
I will second that.
Do we want to second that, Will? We have, we have one now. Motion's been made and seconded. Do we need to vote on this with the withdrawal? Or is it just done?
Clear to vote.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? One opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none? Thank you. Counselor Bullock.
The city council moved that it be ordered-- Oops, sorry, I'm on motions for reconsider.
Oops, sorry, I'm on motions for reconsideration still. Here we go. "The City Council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council pursuant to Charter Section 2-10 affirms the following appointments by the mayor to the Recreation Commission. Daniel Pajasecki alternate for a term to expire December 31, 2025, short term to replace Heather Valenta, and Heather Valenta from alternate to full member for a three-year term to expire June 30, 2026. Majority vote required."
Second, Ricketts.
Motion's been made and seconded.
"We did not hold appointments and ordinances in order to allow counselors to attend all the Ways and Means meetings this month."
Is there anyone like to speak to this? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any objections? Any abstentions? Thank you. Yeah, I do that all the time. Any abstentions? Sheila, turn your microphone on for me, please. All right. Seeing none? All right, thank you. That's all right. Seeing none, motion passes. Thank you. All right. Counselor Disorga. Page 16.
"The City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Weidergartner, in order for community preservation, GHS Track ADA access, ordered that the Greenfield City Council appropriate from CPA reserved for open space the sum of $750 to fund the GHS Track ADA access as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee. The amount requested will be used for a concrete connection path to provide access to the Greenfield High School Track and spectator viewing area by the Greenfield Recreation Department."
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Counselor Disorga, could you do us a favor? Before you give us the finding from Ways and Means on this and the recommendation, could you briefly, just for people to know what these CPAs are and what they're about, for those that are wondering why this is different from our other budget, this is the first time we've done CPA, so could you kind of give us an idea of what that's about? They did offer to come and speak with us this evening, and I told them, being a time situation, I wasn't sure it would be necessary, but I did appreciate them saying they would come and speak to us. Counselor Disorga.
So the Community Preservation Committee is made up by individuals appointed by both the mayor and the city council, and they were under the leadership of Travis Drury. Did a thorough vetting of all of the plans that came before them. They're in, most of them are in three categories. There are housing, open space, there's an undesignated fund, historical preservation. And for any of you who watched any of the meetings, they were fabulous. It was a great committee. I'm not going to try to name everyone on it for fear of forgetting a few. But we took their recommendations to heart, and many of us had watched, and we went along with what they had approved.
And Counselor Disorga, where did the CPA funds come from?
They're taxed and matched. That was something, I think, within the past year. And you see it on your tax bills, and there's a match from the state. They're hoping that it will be a one-to-one match, but it isn't that every year. It sort of depends on how the state's doing and what their decision is.
And I thank you. Now, we just wanted to make sure we had that on the record for those people that aren't used to the CPA, because it was brand-new for us, was voted by the majority of our constituents, and is now in play. Can you tell us specifically about this one, and then we'll get to voting on these. We won't have to do that for everyone.
The GHS Track?
Yes.
Yes, it was a slight oversight and from, with a sidewalk is to the track. It's just a grass pathway over to the viewing area and to the track. So if you had a mobility issue, it would be difficult for you. So this was actually partially funded by a donation from the Disability Access Commission, and then the rest from CPA funding.
And what was the recommendation from committee?
Unanimous positive.
Any discussion on this? Counselor Lapiensky?
Yeah, I would like to move that we take all of the CPA orders as a group and vote on them together.
I don't think we can do that.
I'll second that.
We can. Show me where it says we can't.
Show me where it says we can.
Okay, let's do it separate so we can keep going.
We have the ability to do it. It's been made and seconded.
We should do it as a group, though. It's a good idea.
Northampton does it all the time.
I believe the problem I'm having, Counselor Disorga, is there's not positive recommendations from the committee on all of these? There was one that was questioned whether we were going to bring it forward? No?
No. No, we voted unanimously for all.
Okay, so all of them were unanimous positive recommendations?
They do, but they do have individual financial orders.
And the financial orders are different from different sources?
They are. They are. I would... Not think that they could be done together, honestly. I don't. I think they come from different funding sources, so I think they...
I think on... Let's continue with these as we planned only, because I don't want to make that mistake and have them coming from wrong funding sources. I appreciate the idea.
Sure, so we have a motion on the floor. It's been made and seconded.
Yes, the motion's been made and seconded. You've heard the description. All in favor of voting these together? Roll call vote? Got to have a roll call vote on this.
This is something we can do.
So this is a roll call vote on the proposed motion to take all of the CPA agenda items in one vote. Counselor Golub, a yes would, sorry, a yes would take them all in one, and no will keep them separate. Counselor Golub?
No.
Counselor Disorga?
No.
Counselor Bottomley?
No.
Counselor Bullock?
I'm sorry, I have to abstain. I don't feel like we actually have adequate information on this.
Counselor Gilmore?
No.
Counselor Lapiensky?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
No.
Counselor Healy?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
No.
Vice President Forgé?
Yes.
Counselor Ricketts?
Yes.
Counselor Toranzo?
No.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes, no.
The motion fails by majority.
Counselor Disorga, continue. We have the motion on the floor for $750. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none, motion passes. Counselor Disorga.
"The City Council, upon recommendation by Mayor Weidergartner, in order for community preservation Beacon Park improvements, ordered that the Greenfield City Council appropriate from CPA undesignated the sum of $75,500 to fund the Beacon Park Improvements Project as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee. The amount requested will be used for the installation of two Nubachi courts and replacement of two water fountains at the Beacon Park by Greenfield Recreation Department."
Any discussion on this item? Oh, second. I need a second. Thank you, Toranzo. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Counselor Disorga.
"The City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Weidergartner, in order for the community preservation citywide outdoor site amenities, ordered that the Greenfield City Council appropriate from CPA undesignated the sum of $22,226.31 to fund the citywide outdoor site amenities as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee. The amount requested will be used by the Greenfield Recreation Department for the installation of an interactive play amenities to be placed on recreation-controlled property throughout the city."
Second, Ricketts.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none, motion passes.
"The City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Weidergartner, in order for the community preservation CSO Shelter Expansion, ordered that the Greenfield City Council appropriate from CPA reserved for community housing the sum of $47,523.69 from CPA undesignated, the sum of $52,476.31, for a total of $100,000, to be provided to the CSO Wells Street Shelter Expansion Project as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee. The amount requested will be raised for the expansion of the shelter at 60 Wells Street by clinical support options."
Second, Ricketts.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on this item? Having none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes.
"The City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Weidergartner, in order for community preservation FCAS Barn Rehabilitation, ordered that the Greenfield City Council appropriate from CPA reserved for Historic Resources the sum of $31,023.69 for the FCAS Barn Rehabilitation as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee. The amount requested will be used for the rehabilitation of cattle barn roofs at the Franklin County Fairgrounds by the Franklin County Agricultural Society."
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none, motion passes.
"The City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Weidergartner, in order for the community preservation Highland Trail Park Restoration, ordered that the Greenfield City Council appropriate from CPA reserved for open space the sum of $15,000 to fund the Highland Park Trail Restoration Project as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee. The amount requested will be used for the renovation of trails in Highland Park and Temple Woods by the Greenfield Recreation Department with Kim Boas."
Second.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes.
"The City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Weidergartner, in order for community preservation Historical Society Document Preservation, ordered that the Greenfield City Council appropriate from CPA reserved for Historic Resources the sum of $15,500 for the Historical Society Document Preservation Project as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee. The amount requested will be used by the Historical Society for the preservation of documents donated by the estate of Peter Miller."
Second.
Second.
Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none, motion passes.
"The City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Weidergartner, in order for community preservation, MOIH Shop Equipment Restoration, ordered that the Greenfield City Council appropriate from CPA reserved for Historic Resources the sum of $1,000 for the Museum of our industrial heritage, MOIH, as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee. The amount requested will be used for the restoration of antique shop equipment."
Second.
Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none, motion passes.
"The City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Weidergartner, in order for community preservation Pickleball Court Expansion, ordered that the Greenfield City Council appropriate from CPA reserved for open space the sum of $7,773.69 and from CPA undesignated the sum of $42,226.31, for the total of $50,000 for the Greenfield Pickleball Court Expansion Project as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee. The amount requested will be used for design engineering and site readiness of a multi-court pickleball facility adjacent to the Abercrombie Field by the Greenfield Recreation Department with the Greenfield Mass Pickleball."
Second. Second, Ricketts, yes.
Any discussion on this item?
Yes.
Seeing...
I just wanted to say something. This was the only plan brought forth by CPA that actually had people come in that were dressed as pickles. It had an overwhelming response.
Thank you for that. Is there any other discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any objections? None, seeing... Yeah, now I've lost my... I'm starting to talk about pickles. I just lost my mind for a moment. Any abstentions? Seeing none, motion passes. Go ahead.
"The City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Weidergartner, in order for community preservation Shattuck Park Fitness Cluster, ordered that the Greenfield City Council appropriate from CPA reserved for open space the sum of $24,000 to fund the Shattuck Park Fitness Cluster as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee. The amount requested will be used for the installation of a fitness cluster at Shattuck Park by the Greenfield Recreation Department."
Second.
Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Just note that Counselor Lapiensky was not here for the vote. Moving on. FY '24 Operating Budget, six orders. Council City Clerk Scott, how would you like to approach the $61 million start?
So the motion in the packet on page 26 should be read, and then the council should go through the operating budget as proposed by the mayor. For example, saying that the city council's salary and wages line is thus, and the expenditure line is thus, and if anyone has any proposed amendments for the city council, that would be a time for the amendment to be proposed. And each section of the budget should be gone through individually with the expense and the salary and wages, so that people can have options, opportunities to make amendments.
Okay. A couple of things here. One is, to keep things moving along tonight, I am going to ask, if you remember when we did this last year, we had an issue where we would make a motion, and then we would amend it, and then we'd amend the amendment, and then we'd amend the amended amendment, and pretty soon I couldn't even tell where we were, and we were trying to get it. So what I would like to do on these is, I would like everyone to speak to the main motion. If you're proposing an amendment to that line, that you come back with the amendment, and then we follow that amendment through, whether it's killed or continues. But if we keep amending the amendment, it gets very confusing and hard to track. We should be taking a break at 8:30, as prescribed by charter. We're going to take the five-minute break right now, and then we will come back and get right into this budget. So as we prepare to go into this, once again, Kathy will reiterate, if, reading the amounts and then the amended amounts by line. When we get there, the finance director will be at the table. If you have a question, it's not really questions and answers with the finance director tonight. The, it's basically if we have a discrepancy like we just had, where we need a specific number, figure, percentage, I will request that of the director, as we always have. I would, yeah, go ahead and give that to Ginny. And then, second of all, I want to address one piece before we get going. For my counselors that have received a lot of email this week with opinions, we are going to continue to follow our agenda... going to continue to follow our agenda and our procedure as we always have, and we will continue to fall as we had, follow as we've been advised by our, our council policies, the charter, and all that are there. So do not let any of the things that we received this week work as a distraction to get what we need to get done this evening. We want to stay on focus and work through these budget items. We were still receiving opinions today, which I think could not even be considered. So we don't want to go there. We're just going to stay on task and follow the procedure as outlined. Counselor Disorga, do you want to clarify what we're going to talk about right now as far as the changed number? And I'm sorry, because I'm kind of throwing Counselor Disorga into the middle of this, but this was that number that she questioned, and I just need a brief explanation, and we're going to read the order, and this was the second reading?
Second reading, okay.
Okay. The, the public hearing and the second reading can stay as is because we're lowering the number. And Counselor Disorga, could you read the order for public record? Oh, when we get to the official order? Okay, we don't have to do that. When you read the regular order, I'm sorry, misunderstood. When you read the regular order, when we get to that line, you'll read this number. The lowered number. Thank you. Counselor Disorga. Page 26.
Thank you. In order to appropriate $61,627,584 for fiscal year 2024 general fund budget, ordered that the sum of $61,627,584, which is the full amount necessary for the fiscal year 2024 general fund budget, July 1, 2023, to June 30, 2024, be appropriated for the purposes stated. To meet said appropriation, $250,000 will be transferred from the parking meter receipts reserved, and $50,000 from free cash. $61,327,584 will be from raised and appropriate. Majority vote required.
The motion's been made and seconded. Now we will start our discussion.
Okay. I'm going to go through wages, I'm going to go through each, not each line item, but the general groupings.
Correct.
As here, okay? City Council salary and wages. $69,150. City Council expenditures, $23,000.
Point of order, should we?
Yep.
Last year, we did the expense and the wages line separately.
Right, this is, the expenditures was next. Expenditures is $23,000. Ways and Means made a recommendation for a decrease to the expenditures line on City Council of $4,000.
And what was the rationale behind that?
The rationale was, it was for meetings and seminars, and we wanted to start by making an example of our own budget, and to look at our own budget and see where we could cut something. And over the past several years, I don't think that we've ever spent more than $500 in that, the line item for meetings and seminars, so that comes off, that would come off the expenditure line if someone wants to make a motion to reduce that line item by $4,000.
So moved.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to reduce that line to 20, to $19,000, is that where it's coming from? To $19,000.
Yes.
Any discussion on this? Counselor Lapinski?
Yeah, I don't believe that we voted on the wages line item yet.
Yeah. It just got started, Stan gave this kind of, I don't know exactly what he said, but...
Mute. Thank you.
So point of, point of order?
Yes.
There's a motion on the table, and I think that, you know, if we skipped over something, we could go back, but probably not in the middle of a motion.
Yeah. The motion was for amending the expenditure line, so I would agree with Counselor Gilmore that we need to vote on this, and if we're going to go back to the wages line, we will, but we have a motion on the floor. Is there any discussion on the expenditures line reduction to $19,000? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions? All right.
Point of clarification. I believe, if I'm recalling right, last year, if we didn't have any changes to one of the line items, like in this one, salary and wages, we just did a vote of the total of that department, the total legislative, so it would be just doing a total reduction down to 82, or 88,150.
Is that what you were going to say, Clerk Scott? The clerk was going to say that because we had the point of order, I didn't let her speak to that, so that is correct. If we're not changing the line, if there's no motion to change the line, we just continue on. So now, do we want to reduce the total line, or we're adequate with what we did? So, yep, Counselor Disorga, we need to make a motion on the bottom line for legislative with showing that reduction.
I'd move that we lower the bottom line of total legislative to $88,150.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion on this line? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none, motion passes.
Mayor's salary and wages, 236,843. This had a reduction. The reduction was $4,342 in the salary and wages line.
And what was the rationale?
The rationale was, the mayor had, the mayor's raise that she had given herself was eliminated, and it was felt that the person who left in Communications, that, that position did not need an increase, and so that we just increased the personnel that was there by, I think, 3%. But Aaron, Aaron who was in Communications left, so we didn't think that was necessary.
Is there any other discussion on this line?
I need, I need total clarification on the amount we're reducing it by.
$4,342. Did you get the little packet tonight? That's the little chart.
The addition packet? You'll see in the right column, the Ways and Means recommendations are on this, showing the thing. No, that's fine, make sure, I want everyone in the same place. All right. Any other discussion on reducing that line? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any of...
Aye.
I thought, I thought that's, did we have a motion on that piece? So let's, can someone make a motion with the reduced amount in there?
Move to reduce the salary and wages lines of the mayor by $4,342, making the new sum there, $232,501.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on that total motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes.
Mayor's expenditures is $22,900. We, we moved to reduce the expenditures in that by $1,178.
And these recommendations from Ways and Means, they were all...
They were unanimous recommendations from Ways and Means.
Any discussion on this item? Any rationale? All right. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'd move that we reduce the expenditure line of the mayor from $22,900, we'll reduce it by $1,178, for a total of $21,722.
Second.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on this line? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none, motion passes.
I guess I'd make a next motion that the total line for the mayor would be reduced from $259,743 down to $254,223.
Second, Disorga.
Motion's been made and seconded.
Could you repeat that figure, please, Mike?
$254, the, the initial was $259,743. It would be reduced to $254,223.
Is there any other discussion on this line? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any objections? Motion passes. Oh, yeah, I did it again. Thank you. Any abstentions? If I do that twice, you get two try, two shots at objecting. I want to just ask the Finance Director, are you keeping a running total of what we're actually passing and reducing by, so if we get to a point where we have to verify a total, we'll be there? Okay. I just wanted to clarify that, because at times, we, our numbers start to change, and we want to make sure we're clear on the total reduction by the time we get to the bottom. Thank you. Counselor Disorga?
Executive, executive administration, $84,000 for salary and wages. We, we had that stay the same from Ways and Means, and executive administration expenditures, $600, $600, we made no recommendation to change either of those.
Any discussion on those items? We can just move on. Continue?
So the total executive administration then was $84,600. Onto economic development and marketing?
Yes.
The mayor's request was for $107,044 for salary and wages, and Ways and Means recommended a reduction to salary and wages of $34,334.
And the rationale behind that deduction?
So, they have been adding staff to that department, and the recommendation was to make the director's position fully funded by, by appropriation from the city, as opposed to CDBG funding. And we recommended that it stay the same, that half of it be funded by CDBG funding. Additionally, this, this whole budget, both salary and wages and expenditures, increased, I think, 58% in the last year and 40-something percent the year before. So we did make recommendations to both salary and wages and expenditures for reductions.
And point of clarification, if there's any member of Ways and Means that once the rationale has been presented, if you would like to add or correct or change, please just get my attention, I will allow that. I don't expect Counselor Disorga or any counselor to retain every bit of discussion from every line in this budget, so someone might remember a discussion that happened that they're keyed on, or that they'd like to bring up. So if you're in that, in the body, please, when I ask for any rationale, feel free to acknowledge that. And then if anyone else has any discussion, once the rationale's been read, then we can follow on. Is there any discussion on this line from the council? Oh, yeah. Well, we, does someone want to make a motion for that reduction?
I can make the motion to move to reduce the line item for salary and wages from $107,000 and, $107,44 to $56,830. Oh, sorry, that's not right. I, I removed, I took away the total. $72,710.
Second.
That is correct. We have a second on that. Now, is there any discussion on this reduction? Counselor Lapinski?
Do I have your permission to ask a question of the Finance Director on this subject?
Is it financial question related?
Yes.
Go ahead and ask.
So, what, what we heard is that this position has in the past been funded by the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, and that we're now moving this to our regular operating budget. Is that because that grant is no longer available?
No, that's not the case. It's, it is still available. It was just so that we would have...
Diana, can you just move it?
Oh, sure, I'm sorry.
No, move it to you, don't move to it, it's fine.
No, that is not the case. We still do have the grant. That is not the reason.
Is there any other discussion?
I would propose that we reduce it by the entire amount of the position, since it's still available to be funded by a grant. Seems prudent to me. Why would we pay 50%? So I'm, I'm willing to wait on my motion until this one's been done.
Yeah, as soon as we discuss this, we can come back if you're looking to amend. Counselor Golub, did you have some discussion on that piece?
Yeah, I'm going to share the rationale that I, as I remember it, my colleagues on Ways and Means, please feel free to add to this. So the intention of the mayor allocating half of the director's position from city funds was in order to allow that position to be able to engage in marijuana development in the city. If that, half of that position is funded, as we are recommending by CDBG funds, that individual will not be able to participate in marijuana-related development activities. But other positions can, and we're not wanting to cut people's salaries from this line, we're just, if we cut this fund, no one will be cut. We're not wanting, we're not wanting positions to be cut. So that's, that's just what's being cut. By cutting that amount, we're just cutting that individual's ability to engage in those activities.
Thank you for that. As, as in other things, the federal guidelines for anything marijuana-related play a role in anything that's federally regulated, as does that grant. Is there any other discussion on this item? Counselor Lapinski, would you like to follow up with that amendment, or are you...
So we, we haven't voted... We haven't voted on the current amendment and you requested that a...
No, I was just wondering if we're going down that path.
Well, so the answer that I just got confused me thoroughly. So is it the case that in this proposed budget, that it would be half grant-funded and half city-funded? Or is the case that in this proposed budget, it would be fully funded by the city?
I can take that. It would remain with our proposal for the reduction. It would be, it would stay the same, that the position would be half-funded by the grant and half-funded by the city. They were proposing to have the entire thing funded by the city.
So in the current fiscal year, it's half and half?
That's correct.
Sure. But I guess, again, my question would be, if the funds are available to have the entire position be grant-funded, why would we not make use of that?
They can only spend, and you can correct me if I'm wrong. They can only spend so much of the grant money on salaries and they pay part of individual salaries. Now, they have more than, how many people are working with the grant funding? Three?
Right, there's three total, but not three FTEs.
Right.
But if I could just respond as well...
Point of clarification, I think we had.
I think as far as the position, it is a shared Economic Development Director position. So if we funded it fully out of CDBG, whether we have the funding available or not, which I don't believe we do, we only, and it's not 50-50, I believe it's 60-40. But we would not be able to use that person to do any type of economic development that wasn't community development-based or around CDBG work. So that's why we split the salary. So the Economic Development Director can focus partially on community development and partially on economic development, which is different than community development.
Okay, that's fine. So no, I have no desire to make an additional amendment.
All right. Counselor Mayo, did you have something to add to this?
I'm a little confused. I was not under the understanding that we could use CDBG money for the type of thing that we're using for the director, you know, as part of the, to do, to deal with exclusively for marijuana coming into the town or planning for that type of business to come into town. This is the first time I've heard that CDBG money has been used. Granted, I haven't been on Ways and Means Committee for a while, but I just want to get an understanding as to, is MJ Adams, is she taking money from CDBG funds?
Counselor Disorga, and then during Doug's question, the mayor raised her hand. So I'm going to let you speak for a moment, Counselor, and then I'm going to recognize the mayor, only because I think it deals with this question. And then we're not going to go into... So I just don't want to get into a lot of, you know, debate and back and forth, but I'm trying to answer these questions. Counselor Disorga?
So I can see where people have questions. And actually, we had a lot of questions about grant funding. And I handed out to Ways and Means papers that I actually have here for everyone about how other municipalities handle their budgets. And it is very good if you can actually see what is paid, what part of the salary is paid by the city and what part is paid for by grant funding. But to answer Doug's question, for years, the people who worked in economic development have been being paid in part by CDBG funding, and that is allowed. It is done in other municipalities.
I think that's all we needed, was that it's allowed, and that was the answer. Mayor, do you have answered a question that was put on the floor? Or have we answered that now?
Not quite. I just want to clarify. So the position of Economic Development Director has, since the previous mayor, been funded 60%, 60-40, CDBG versus the city. And the other portion of it by the city. It was our intent this year to move it into the whole city budget for the simple reason that, so some versions of this have been circulating this evening, and I just want to make the record straight. We decided to move it into this because at the end of the day, in Greenfield and elsewhere in the community, the marijuana industry is a legitimate agricultural industry. Federal funding, which is the CDBG, does not allow anyone who's paid all in part or partially with CDBG funding. And CDBG funding certainly enables salaries to be paid by that grant if they're working in community development. And that is Anna Oltman, who's now our CDBG grant facilitator or manager. So back to the position of Economic Development Director. To move it into fully being funded, it's the same amount of money plus whatever the 3% increase is that we've always had. It's just all on the operating budget at this time. So that, so that this person can facilitate and work with others who are in the industry.
We've got a point of order.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you, Mayor.
If anybody has questions, I'm happy to answer them. But just wanted to clarify.
Perfect, thank you. All right. Is there any other questions on that line and that reduction of that line? We have a motion on the floor. What motion is still on the floor? To reduce the salary by $34,334 is on the floor. Is there any other discussion on that motion? Your counselors, you're all muted at the moment. So I will unmute you shortly. We had a feedback situation. Okay. Any other discussion on this? Okay. So we will vote on that reduced line of 34,34. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none? Motion passes. Counselor Disorga?
Economic Development expenditures, $40,880. And the Ways and Means recommended to reduce that line item by $15,880. Okay. So as you can see, it's gone up significantly. Adopted in '23 was $24,250. This year, there's a subscription for the kiosk that's going to be on Court Square, as I recall, for $36,000.
Counselor Disorga, can you bring your mic a little closer?
Yes, there's a reduction, I think. I mean, there was an appropriation inside of that for $3,600 for the kiosk on the Common. And also for $3,600 and somewhere around $3,000 for a subscription to the new website. And it was mentioned in Ways and Means that we were not able to afford subscriptions to Science magazines. So that was part of our rationale for reducing the expenditure line in Economic Development.
I have a question. So in that reduction, there's nothing that we would have just paid to install or add that would be impacted by this reduction? Because, you know, I have a problem when we, this is me as the counselor, not me as your council president. I have a problem when we build something, do something, and then withhold the funds to get it to operate properly. So is this, any of that situation, would there be an impact to any of the infrastructure we've just paid to add with this reduction? Or were these subscriptions weren't tied in directly with any of that?
There were loads of other uses in the expenditure lines that could be paying for that additionally. I think the kiosk subscription was for two years. And I think by budgeting procedures, you're only supposed to, supposed to, in one year's worth. But no, there would be enough other money with the reduction, in our opinion.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion from counselors on this item? We need a motion for that line.
Move to reduce the expenditure line there from $40,880 to $25,000.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any more discussion on that item? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? One.
Point of clarification. I know we've taken a couple, I'm wondering if we've taken a couple of extra votes than we need to on some of these. When a branch is broken up into this many subcategories, if we haven't made any, like, we just made two changes to that. Do we have to vote again for the total assist to the mayor line? Or can we just skip down to the total executive?
I believe it goes to total executive. I think you're correct.
So we don't have to do every subtotal along the way?
So we don't have to keep subtotaling with a vote?
I thought that might speed it up.
So when we get to the bottom line, you are correct, Counselor Tronzo. Just keep track of our reductions so we don't get to a number that doesn't match with our director by the end of the discussions.
In that case, could I move for the total executive line to be reduced from $492,267 down to $436,533?
Second.
That motion's been made and seconded. Do those numbers appear accurate to all? Any other discussion on that total? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any objections?
Any opposed?
Any, yes, any opposed? I'll keep, you should move closer. Any abstentions? Seeing none? Motion passes.
Reserve Fund, $75,000. Accounting, salary and wages, $264,099. Accounting, expenditures, $154,110. Total accounting, $418,209.
There's no motions to change any of those lines?
No.
We can continue?
Independent City Audit, $60,000. Assessors, salary and wages, $136,384. Assessors, expenditures, $85,560. Treasurer Collector, salary and wages, $198,69. Treasurer Collector, expenditures, $55,105. Total Treasurer Collector, $253,174. Tax Title, $67,500. Total Financial Administration, $10,095,827.
Anyone looking for any discussion on any of those items? Moving forward, Counselor Disorga?
Sorry, can I ask a question?
Yes.
I'm following around in the budget book, and it looks like we skipped over legal?
Legal's next.
Legal's next.
Are they just in different orders in this book?
The individual pages are, but the chart in the beginning of it, the chart in the beginning of it, I think, is in the same order.
I see. Thank you.
Sorry, Sheila, I can't see what you're looking at. And I don't, just do exactly what you did if you need a point of clarification.
Labor Legal Services, $95,000. Ways and Means recommended a reduction of $30,000. And the rationale for that was we received figures that, you know, where we were in the operating budget as of April 30th. So with a couple of months to go, we had only spent $8,649 and $56,350 was still available. So we figured that a reduction of $30,000 was a safe bet. The town attorney was slightly over with $12,000, which was why we went with the $30,000 figure.
And the, I'm sorry, I have a question on that. The town attorney, that's for, the town attorney for labor?
No, I just, I was just...
It's for the city attorney services?
Labor Legal, $95,000, I was just explaining our rationale that why we had recommended just a $30,000 reduction.
But the Labor Legal Services that were on for $95,000 is the labor attorney, correct?
Yes. Labor Legal Services and Labor Specialty.
Okay, I just don't want to...
It's legal services for labor.
Okay. Is there any discussion on this line? Someone, Counselor Lapienski?
Well, I have a couple of questions to figure out the difference between these line items. So what is the difference between labor relations and labor special litigation? And which of these line items is where the money comes from to fund the attorneys for the Chief Hague lawsuit?
I'm not sure where to direct this question.
I believe that, I believe that the Town Attorney Services would have to do with that, but it definitely is not the line item that we're talking about right now. We're talking about Labor Legal Services, $95,000. And we don't have a motion yet on the table. Yes. I'm sorry, I'm not in charge.
To help answer the question, the legal services for Chief Hague comes from MIA, M-I-A-A. It is our insurance company for the city. That's where the legal line item is paid out of. We pay the insurance. If there's a suit against the town, then the insurance company picks up the legal fees, and they're responsible for that. It does not come from our general operating budget.
Counselor Bullock?
I had another question.
Let me, I'll come back to you.
I'd like to make a motion to reduce this line, the line item for Labor Legal Services from $95,000 to $65,000. Second.
Any discussion on this now?
Well, I guess I can't make the motion I was going to make now because one just got made. Thank you for that. My question is, if we only used $8,000, why are we leaving $35,000 in the line item?
In every budget, you have to, may I?
Of course.
In every budget, you have to plan for what might be. We have different contracts that come up at different times. We have a lot of our contracts that are settled. And you look at the, I mean, I'm not the financial director, but you look at the last few years, you see where you are for something, and that was a reasonable reduction to that line item. It was not reducing it to exactly where it is because you don't know what other things you're going to need. But it was, it felt to be a reasonable reduction.
All right. I would, sensing what you're talking about, Counselor Lapienski, you're considering reducing this further in a motion than the $30,000?
I was hoping to understand the issue well enough to figure out if that made sense.
I just was going to recommend that...
And I don't understand it well enough yet.
What I was going to recommend is that you would let this motion play out, and then you can make another motion to amend to a different number.
And, and I will do that, but next time, if you take the floor away from me when I'm about to make a motion, I might not do the same thing.
Yes. No, I hear that. I just didn't know what motion you were going to, I thought we were still in the discussion phase, and we jumped ahead. Councillor Forgy?
Maybe I can help a little bit by way of explanation. Whatever it says-
Microphone.
Legal, whoops, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. Where it says legal, labor legal, councillor Disorga is correct. That is what the city uses. The labor attorney for any labor-related issues that arise, it could be a grievance that is filed, it could be contractual negotiations, which is primarily where that labor legal services would be used. And the other legal service is any of the town's businesses, business that gets done or needed. For instance, if the planning board needs a legal opinion, or, you know, any of, the conservation commission might need one, and then, of course, the mayor has needs as well. Those are all basically covered by town attorney services. And if I'm not mistaken, I believe that's a retainer. I don't know if Diana can answer that.
Well, Diana, the mayor has offered to answer that question. Mayor?
I would rather.
Are you ready for me to speak? Are you ready for me to speak?
I'm ready for you to answer any question that was proposed.
I understand.
Okay.
So there isn't a retainer. It's a bill monthly, and much of what has been said is accurate. The fact that there is some money left in the budget means that we budget what we project, and yes, weekly, there is a need to consult with our labor attorney. It isn't just about contracts. Actually, we do pretty well settling our contracts. It's when grievances and other issues come up. So you always want to have enough money in there, which will, at the end of the day, if there's a surplus, we know what happens to it. It gets reconciled at the end of the day. So, you know, the reduction is the reduction, but it's not necessary really at the end of the day, because some of that money, if there's any leftover, will come. But we don't know what's coming down the pipe. So-
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Mayor. Councillor Gollum?
Point of order, and a request. The two answers that the mayor has given so far are answers that the Ways and Means Committee could provide. Would you be willing to ask us first?
No, but I will, I will. It's very hard for me to know what question the mayor's going to answer until she answers. So, you know, it's a little bit tough for me to know if she's answering a question. She's not putting her hand up for discussion. I see when, what's happening is because I'm watching the screen, when someone answers a question, and we look, we're not, we don't have the answer, I've seen her hand. So I will continue with the thought that we, I want answers to questions, and I think that's what we're trying to get. And if the Ways and Means feels like they've answered the question completely, then, then we don't necessarily have to get that answer. Councillor Bullock?
My, my request is in a similar vein. Can, moving forward, could it be that if a councillor has a question, they make a request of the department head on their own to answer the question? Like, I could say, can I request the mayor or the financial director to answer that question?
I would say that would be my, that would be my intent, except if we have a question that's looming, and we have an answer from the mayor, then I, then I would respect that piece to get the question answered, so we don't proceed with something with wrong information.
I just do want to point out that all of the answers, all of the questions that have been asked tonight have been answered in the Ways and Means meetings that have gone on over the last month and a half.
You will, you will find out that 98% of the questions that get asked on this floor have already been answered before, in some meeting, some subcommittee, something, and then, we do have good questions, but most of them are rehashed in some style. Someone else had a question? Councillor Mayo?
Yes, this is for the mayor. She spoke about-
Like that?
Some of the money would be used for grievances and things of that nature. Money, money from a lawyer does not go to grievances, it goes to arbitration.
Point of order, we're, we're digressing off the budget at this point.
And we're digressing off of the motion that's on the floor. So I am not going to entertain that at the moment, we're going to move forward. Could you remind us what we're voting on?
We are voting to reduce the line item for labor legal services from $95,000 to $65,000, a reduction of $30,000.
Is there any other discussion on that item? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Sorry. Any abstentions? Seeing none? Motion passes. Now, councillor Disorga?
Town Attorney Services, $100,000. That would bring total legal to $165,000.
I, I have a question. In this City Attorney Services line, that would be the mayor's attorney for opinions, is that where that line is? Is that where that comes from?
Yeah.
What would it be in that line?
Town Attorney Services.
I'd like to make a motion to reduce that line by $10,000.
Second.
I just, I think we're having a tendency at the moment to use lawyers every step of the way when questions are answered, and then they don't like the opinion, we're having it in multiple departments at once. So it's just my way of indicating that if we're using something excessively, it's got to be thought about. I would like to call a lawyer for half my stuff in my house, but I don't, because I don't have the money to afford one. So I think you got to look at that from time to time, that's the rationale for that motion. Any other discussion on that from any councillor Disorga?
I can tell you've had an awful lot of legal opinions this week, so yes, that seems like a very wise idea. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none, motion passes.
So, so that actually brings total legal to $155,000. Human Resources, salary and-
We're not done with that yet.
Yep, we're done with that line.
Sure, but I'm about to make a motion, which is allowed, under the rules.
Yep.
I understand you don't want to hear it, but I'm going to make a motion to reduce the, I believe it should really be called the City Attorney Services, by an additional $40,000 with the same rationale.
Do we have a second? Was that a second?
Yes, it was.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Councillor Bullock?
Can I get a point of clarification, please?
Sure.
What would that bring the total down to? If this, if this amendment passes, what would the total be?
It would bring the total for the line item of City Attorney Services to a grand total of $50,000, because it's been reduced by 10, and I'm adding a 40.
Thank you.
Councillor Forgy?
Thank you. While I'm all for going through this budget with a fine-tooth comb, I think that for us to do anything more than what has been suggested at this point will really handicap this city. I want to point out that as we go through this budget, it is not about the mayor, it is about the money, and we are guardians of that, and we are to do the best job we possibly can in making sure that our government runs. And in this litigious society, I think it would be reckless of us to reduce it any further. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Councillor Bullock?
If, well, I guess point of clarification first. Does anyone remember what our current legal budget is for this year for the city council? Is it still $10,000, $20,000? $10,000?
I believe it's $10,000, yes.
Okay. Okay, that's helpful for me, just, I just want to name that discrepancy there between legal budgets. And then, second, I want to just say that I agree with councillor Forgy that we, I watched or attended all the Ways and Means meetings, and they went through this budget with a fine-tooth comb, and I believe they came up with recommendations that were like very deeply thought out and discussed, and they questioned department heads. You know, the mayor, in her my turns, called it like a trifecta of irresponsibility, and I've been like lovingly calling you guys the like quintuple of irresponsibility for, for finding this amount of money. And so I do agree with councillor Forgy that any further reductions have been discussed in a dozen meetings over the last two months, very intensely for hours and hours. And I just appreciate that time, and I, and I agree that we are in a time when we need to be able to ask for legal opinions, and, and I recognize the discrepancy that's there.
Is there any other discussion on additional reduction? Councillor Disorga? We have a motion on the floor, remember.
I agree with councillor Bullock, and this, we actually did go through each line item, and we looked to see where we were on munis. The town attorney was $12,000 over, so I can't go for a further reduction. We actually looked to see where we could make reductions that made sense.
All right. Any other discussion on this? Jasper? Oh, councillor Lapinski?
Councillor Lapinski, so here's, here's the thing. I would expect that we'd be over on the city attorney, because the mayor rings up all kinds of attorneys to produce lies for this council to digest, and I would like to see less of those.
Point of order, let's do this respectfully.
I'm, I'm doing it about as respectfully as the mayor is when she submits false information to this council under the guise of-
Let's just avoid naming.
I think we are off the motion, I agree.
So I'm explaining why I've made the motion. You don't have to agree with my reason.
Make, make, make the motion, and then we can vote on it.
So the motion's been made, he was, are, are you done with your?
So my, my point was that I understand the money's being used, and I would like to hamper the mayor's ability to use it in the way she has been doing.
Councillor Ricketts?
Make a motion to call the question.
All those, we need a second on that, to call the question, second by Elmer. All those in favor calling the question?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Call the question.
And roll call on the motion.
This is, the, the motion now is to reduce by an additional $40,000. Yea would reduce it by an additional $40,000. No would keep it where we have just reduced it to. Roll call vote, councillor, Clerk Scott.
Councillor Gollum?
No.
Councillor Disorga?
No.
Councillor Bottomley?
No.
Councillor Bullock?
No.
Councillor Gilmore?
No.
Councillor Lapinski?
Yes.
Councillor Mayo?
Yes.
Councillor Healy?
No.
Councillor Elmer?
No.
Vice President Forgy?
No.
Councillor Ricketts?
No.
Councillor Toronto?
Nope.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes. No.
The motion fails by majority.
Councillor Disorga?
Human Resources, salary and wages, $239,400. Human Resources expenditures, $21,887. Total human resources, $261,287. Technology Department, salary and wages, $313,000. Total, total technology, $634,050.
I'd like to move that we lower the total operations support line to sum of $40,000 for a new balance of $1,050,000, $1,050,337.
So moved, Forgy.
We want to clarify that.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded.
I have a stroke, sorry.
Can we clarify that?
All right. I'm sorry, I'm drawing, total blank. Councillor Disorga?
Mm-hmm.
Can you, before the vote is taken, please reread the Greenfield Technology Department expenditure line? Thank you.
321050.
Thank you.
May I make a comment about our discussion about this in Ways and Means? I don't have a motion to cut.
No.
I, I want to just name that we went back and forth about adding a new position to the Technology Department. This was something that I grappled with, and given that the Technology Department recently hired a new person, but because, particularly, there were many reasons I agreed with adding this position, and just one of them is, just want to echo one of the people in public comment today, that the importance of accessibility, and also, and expanding accessibility of meetings potentially, and also in the auditor's report, the importance of digital safety. That's why I want to support us maintaining this line item.
Can I ask the rationale? Did we get the rationale on why the reduction was requested?
The reduction was the total, it wasn't for that department, it was for the total of operational support, which took into account the $30,000 reduction to the labor attorney, and the $10,000 reduction to the city attorney.
So we're not making any additional cuts?
Nope, that was just the sum, it's the same.
We, you're just, you are just giving the final total so we can vote on the new line?
On the final line item for that department.
Any other discussion on that? All in favor of the reduction as recommended?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none, motion passes.
City Clerk, salary and wages, $169,393. City Clerk expenditures, $12,775. Total City Clerk, $182,168. Elections, salary and wages, $38,500. Elections expenditures, $18,500. Total elections, $57,000. Board of Registros, salary and wages, $3,500. Board of Registros expenditures, $14,000. Total Board of Registros, $17,500. Licensing Commission, salary and wages, $39,543. Licensing Commission expenditures, $950. Total Licensing Commission, $40,493. Total Licensing and Registration, $297,161. Conservation Commission, $500. Planning Board, $500. Zoning Board of Appeals, $600. Planning and Community Development, salary and wages, $110,911. Planning and Community Development salary and wages, $110,911. Planning and Community Development expenditures, $6,250. Total Planning and Community Development, $117,161. Total Land Use and Development?
If anyone's following along on the council insert, there's a line here that was added that has no bearing to this. It, it's, there's background, you'll see it says division, division. Just ignore that, we're moving forward with the, so that, that page is done. Moving on. Now you're at central maintenance, is that where we go to now?
Central Services.
Yes.
Central Services salary?
Yep.
And wages, $73,241. Central Services expenditures, $306,870. Total Central Services, $380,111. Central Maintenance salary and wages, $518,858. Central Maintenance expenditures, $207,520. Ways and Means recommended decrease in the expenditure line for $4,860. The reason for that was contracted, we eliminated contracted services for the Levitt-Hovey House. And we also, which was $4,060. And we eliminated Levitt-Hovey House cleaning supplies, $800. Thinking that there's an RFP out on the Levitt-Hovey House. And if they needed further cleaning supplies, maybe they would be running next door.
Are there any questions? We're going to have to make a motion on the reduction if someone intends to make that.
I'd move to reduce the expenditure line of central maintenance by $4,860 to a new total of $202,660.
Second?
Second.
That motion's been made and seconded, discussion. I have some questions. As that's a municipal piece of property, in this interim between the time we put it out for an RFP and the time that an RFP is sold, because I don't think this is the first time it went out for looking for purchase, is there any money left to maintain that building? Because obviously, even if the building's not being utilized, it has to be maintained. I just don't want to have a piece of municipally-owned property that becomes unsalable because of lack of maintenance, we've made that mistake before. So, is there maintenance on that building if we reduce that line? Counselor Disorgar?
We're keeping the electricity on and reducing it. The cleaning supplies, I don't think any of us saw any need for the cleaning supplies. And the contracted services that would be needed there, we are eliminating them. Yes.
Okay, I mean, I'll just reiterate my fear, that we have a building that we still own. And then I fear that if there's no one maintaining it, it could lead to another problem. Counselor Bullock?
I do share that fear, especially since we eliminated in the capital budget the money to fix the roof over there. And I think that we have a tendency to build buildings, or, I mean, that building was built a long time ago, but, and not maintain them. And I wouldn't want to see that happen to the new library or the new fire station. And when I listened to this in Ways and Means, my thought was that if there was a need for a supplemental budget to come forward after the RFP, that that could be a possibility that the Library Committee or someone could bring forward to fix it.
I saw someone else. Counselor Lapinski?
Yeah, I was just wondering, what are the contracted services that we're proposing to eliminate?
I can't delineate, I actually don't remember, I don't recall what the contracted services were for that.
Director Warner?
Thank you. I didn't bring the exact list. I know three items that are in there. One of them is the fire system inspections, that has to be contracted. Also, the fire panel inspection. For, we're right around $2,000. I can't speak for the fire chief. Yes, oh, also pest control is the one I forgot. But fire chief could speak to that more eloquently than me, but I think we have to maintain the fire systems in order to get a permit.
May I, when was that inspected?
I don't have the dates on me. It's generally, also on that line item is the elevator inspections. But if the building's going to be uninhabited, then we think we don't have to do that.
President Gwynn, may I direct that question to the fire chief?
He's coming.
Thank you, Director Warner.
So, the question about fire inspections for the fire protection system and the fire alarm panel, it is required to be done annually and must be maintained and will receive an order to maintain from the Fire Department.
And are we under contract?
That would be a Director Warner question, but my understanding is, all these systems that the city owns, yes, they are all under contract.
Are there any other questions for either director or the chief?
Yeah, I have a follow-up.
Counselor Lapinski?
So, let's say we zero out this line item as proposed, what happens to those fire inspections? Does that mean they don't get done? And if so, what's our?
It puts me in a very difficult spot as the fire chief if we are aware of the inspections that are not being conducted.
And I assume there's some kind of a law or regulation that says we have to inspect them?
Yes, annually.
And your department's not allowed to do that inspection?
We do not conduct private, or fire alarm systems or sprinkler systems inspections. They have to be done by a licensed contractor.
Counselor Bullock?
And is this the type of fire inspection that needs to happen before the sale of a building or property?
Great question. No, we do not require a, an inspection of this magnitude for the sale of commercial property, only residential properties.
Counselor Goleb, did you have something to add?
I was just wondering when the last inspection took place, if you know?
I, not offhand.
Okay.
Any other questions for either our director or the fire chief? All right, seeing none, thank you, chief. Any other comments on this? Counselor Elmer?
I just want to say that we have a lot of business to get through. We spent a lot of time on less than $5,000 here. We should keep things in perspective as we move forward.
Well, yeah.
But, fair enough.
Anyone can think that, but I think if it's, if it's a situation where we're going to neglect a town-owned piece of property with mandated fire inspections, where we could have a problem, it needs to be addressed. It needs to be addressed on the floor at this time before it's cut. And my other thought was, it's also a historical building with a historical easement, and I think it's in poor choice to limit the maintenance on that building. Counselor Toronto?
I'd just like to point out that that explanation was just our rationale from Ways and Means as to where we cut the money from. But that would be coming out of this whole central maintenance line, which, again, we have to reiterate, we don't tell them how to spend every dollar of those line items. That was just our rationale. So, if we cut this by the less than $5,000 we put on there, it doesn't mean that that's not going to get done. It just means that there might have to be some jockeying of money in central maintenance if that becomes a higher priority. I just wanted to point that out, that we're not legitimately just saying we're going to not provide fire services.
Always a good point. Any other discussion on this item? All right, the motion's been made and seconded for the reduction by $4,860. All those in favor?
I asked for a roll call?
Oh, roll call.
Counselor Goleb?
Yes.
Counselor Disorgar?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Bullock?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Lapinski?
No.
Counselor Mayo?
Are you muted?
Counselor Mayo, are you on mute?
Note that Counselor Mayo's not here for the vote, continue.
Counselor Healy?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
No.
Vice President Forghee?
Yes.
Counselor Ricketts?
No.
Counselor Toronto?
Yes.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes, no.
The motion passes by majority.
Counselor Disorgar?
That brings that line item down to $721,518. Energy Department salary and wages, $107,841. Energy Department expenditures, $837,663. We, Ways and Means recommended a reduction of $13,000 to the Energy Department.
And the rationale there?
It was the electricity at the Levitt-Hovey House that we reduced the electricity at the, that was our rationale behind it. But there are many other buildings. The library electricity was budgeted for $18,500 last year. By May 1st, they'd used $11,996. And that was using it daily with customers coming in. So, we felt that it was a reasonable thought to reduce it to $2,000 because they were on track to spend about 12 or 13.
So, you're not suggesting shutting electricity off, you're just saying reducing?
No, we're not shutting it all off, just turning the lights off like we all do when we leave our homes and we're not there.
Does someone want to make a motion? Counselor Healy?
This probably came up in Ways and Means, so I apologize, I don't attend every single meeting, but the electric solar farm, there's a huge discrepancy there in actual and costs. Is there a reason behind that?
Yes. We had, there was a contract signed with the solar farm for the first few years for, I don't remember what the price was per kilowatt hour, but just say for example, it was a penny. And then the contract ended and we're still getting a great rate, but it was up. And we asked about that. And I don't remember exactly what the numbers, but we're still getting a very good rate, but it had increased. We asked, Carol Collins answered that for us. And I was satisfied with the answer, and I can't give you the exact numbers of what it went from and to, but it made sense.
Thank you.
All said on that, Counselor Healy, any? Good? I mean, if you need any follow-up. Any other discussion on this?
I'd move that we cut the expenditure line of the Energy Department by $13,000, bringing the total to $824,663.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I was going to ask a question, but I guess I'm not allowed to do that.
Any opposed?
Yeah, I'm opposed because I wasn't allowed to ask a question as to whether or not we need the money. You have to say any discussion. Can't just steam.
I haven't declared the vote yet. Vote's still open, we haven't declared the vote.
All right, so I'd like to ask a question about this.
Sure.
And I guess this is for maybe Director Marla Warner, I'm not sure exactly who it's for, but my question would be if we reduce this to $2,000, is that enough money to pay for the amount of electricity we'll need if the building is not occupied? I'm assuming the fire systems and some other things are going to require it. Does anybody know how much that's going to cost?
Counselor Disorgar?
So, all the electricity bills aren't paid at the very beginning of the fiscal year. So, we don't know till the end of the fiscal year what an electric bill for any building in the city is going to be. So, what we did was we looked at everything as of May 1 and looked at the energy use. We are not going to shut the lights off there. We made a guess at the reduction. And none of us could know now what the electric bill will be at the end. But again, this is energy use, it's the expenditure line for the entire, you know, for every building in the city. So, we don't actually need to know what, nor could we know what electricity will be used in that building.
Counselor Toronto?
I just wanted to reiterate what I said the last time when we were at Central Services, is that when we're expressing the rationale, it is just the rationale. So, when we take a vote on a reduction, it's not to do, it's not to not pay for the electricity at the Levitt-Hovey House if it goes over $2,000. It's, again, it will be jockeying by the department with all of these, I don't even know how many the Energy Department has, like 60 line items. I'm sure if they needed $400, they would find it in one of the other lines. That's all, I'm just, to not belabor these votes by getting caught in the weeds of the specific line items when we're not voting on what to do at that building or what to do at this building. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this?
I just wanted to add for the record that before the budget came here, I had reduced this budget, the energy budget, I had taken out $10,000 in decorative lighting and $10,000 for the electricity at the town hall. So, if you take this additional reduction, the energy budget will actually be $687 less than it was in this current year. So, I just wanted to note that for the record.
No, thanks for that clarification. Any other discussion? Yeah. So, the line, we're voting on the entire line now, or we're voting on the?
That was on the expenditures.
On the reduction of $13,000. Okay, motion's been made, discussion. Any other discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? One? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Counselor Disorgar? This is a general government total line, so I think, Counselor Toronto, are we?
I got it if you want it. I'd move that we reduce the total others general government line from $2,51,993 down to $2,034,133.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded by Counselor Forghee. Any other discussion on that line? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes.
Police salary and wages, $3,533,109. There was, the committee voted to reduce this line by $125,000. That vote was for one, in favor of reducing it by the amount of the COPS grant, which was $375,000.
So, that, so that's the rationale? Do we want to? Counselor Lapinski had his hand up first, so.
So, I would like to move that we reduce this line item by $175,000 in the amount of Chief Hague's salary consistent with public comment request.
I second that.
Motion's been made and seconded, now it's discussion, point of order.
I'm a little confused.
I'm a little confused. Counselor Disorga made the motion. Is there a second?
No, we hadn't, she read the, she read.
Nobody made the motion.
Correct. The first motion being made is to reduce it by a further amount. Counselor Ricketts, did you have a question?
Yeah, so there wasn't a second to reduce it, correct?
There was.
There was.
I believe Counselor Mayo, you seconded that?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
I know we're not supposed to address our fellow counselors, but President Quinn, if you would allow me to ask Counselor Disorga, since she's the Chair of Ways and Means, I know that they had been doing a lot of work on this budget, and I know that they're looking for every possible penny because they're concerned about education. They didn't come up with a figure as high as what was just proposed. So I would like to hear some more detail about their rationale, because I know that they spent so many hours working on this. And I want to, I want to respect that. If you wouldn't mind me putting that question through you.
I will remind people that we have a motion on the table, which means on the floor. We have a motion. Thank you, Clerk Scott.
Oh, let me, I'm sorry, let me clarify. While I consider whether we would cut by the amount proposed by Counselor Lapinski, I'm also thinking about the recommendation that came from our subcommittee. And I'm trying to think of the pros and cons. And that's why I wanted to hear from our Chair. Because I think that if they thought that it was worth cutting by 175, they would have done that. Because I know that they were trying to scrape up every penny that they could.
I'm going to recognize Counselor Bullock for one moment, and then I'm going to go to Counselor Disorga, because I believe Counselor Disorga can tie that motion to the amended motion, so we're going to go that. Counselor Bullock?
I just have a point of clarification. So, this motion would be, Counselor Lapinski, your motion is to reduce by a total of 175,000, not an additional 175,000.
That's correct, and I can offer further rationale for that specific proposal if needed.
Counselor Disorga?
I was just looking for my explanation.
Hold on, just a minute.
I can't hear. Hold on.
I think she's still. Do you want me to recognize another Counselor and come back?
Yes, you can.
Counselor Forgie?
Okay, where to start on this? I was the dissenting vote on this. On the Ways and Means.
Can I just, I don't mean to stop you, but we're talking on the amendment. Not the, not, it's a $175,000 amendment, so just.
Then I move the question. Second.
The motion's been made and seconded to call the question. This is for reducing it by 170.
No, this is for calling the question.
This is for calling question, yes. Non-negotiable. For calling the question.
Roll call, please.
A yes vote would call the question and no vote would continue debate and discussion. Counselor Goleb?
No.
Counselor Disorga?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Bullock?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
No.
Counselor Lapinski?
No.
Counselor Mayo?
No.
Counselor Healy?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Vice President Forgie?
Yes.
Counselor Ricketts?
Yes.
Counselor Toronto?
Yes.
Does the President wish to vote?
Yes, no.
The motion passes by majority. The question is called.
And a roll call on the question, please. This is just for the 175.
This is a roll call for the motion to reduce the police salary and wages by $175,000. A yes vote would reduce the amount, a no vote would leave it as it currently stands. Counselor Goleb?
Yes.
Counselor Disorga?
No.
Counselor Bottomley?
Abstain.
Counselor Bullock?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
Can you come back to me, please?
Yes. Counselor Lapinski?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Healy?
No.
Counselor Elmer?
No.
Vice President Forgie?
No.
Counselor Ricketts?
No.
Counselor Toronto?
No.
Counselor Gilmore?
I'll vote no.
Does the President wish to vote?
Yes, no.
The motion fails by majority.
We're now back to the, we, no one's made a motion yet. Before that amount suggested, we were getting to that point. Someone want to make that motion?
I will move to reduce it, the amount by $125,000 because of the rationale that was given, which would leave the total to $3,408,109.
I need a second.
Second, Disorga.
Second.
Counselor Forgie?
Thank you. I was the dissenting vote on Ways and Means. Ways and Means voted to reduce 125. This is tied into the COPS grant that we have just accepted as the City of Greenfield. And it has to do with the hiring of three police officers. My esteemed colleagues, I went through this, and their, I will not speak about their thoughts, I will speak only about mine. There was thought at the time that this was an additional, this was an addition to the Police Department budget, and therefore, by accepting the grant for 125, we should be reducing the expenditure line item by 125. But the grant that we accepted does not work that way. And crunching all the numbers, and I know that there will be disagreement with this, but my opinion is there is probably a misunderstanding about the way we do the accounting. And I want to say that if we go ahead and reduce the Police Department by this amount, which is the money that will be spent this year on the COPS grant, we are actually not fully funding the three police officers that are hired under this grant. They need to be supplemented with money in the operating budget in order for them to be paid full-time through the year. This is year one of the COPS grant. If we do not fulfill our obligation with the COPS grant, then we are in danger of losing the grant itself. It will be withdrawn from us. I did not see anywhere, and again, this is to my esteemed colleagues, I did not see anywhere in my explanation, in my calculations, where there was more money added to the Police Department budget, you know, at this point. So in other words, you get a grant, the grant is in addition to an appropriation, and not in lieu of an appropriation. And there is no additional money that I can see, given my experience, that would lend me to believe that there is quote-unquote "a double-dipping effort" going on here. I know there's great concern about the taxpayers, but my dissension was based strictly on the fact that the COPS grant and the cops that we hired must be funded, and I do not see additional money in the budget. I thank you very much.
Counselor Ricketts?
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to be voting no on this. Doesn't matter if it's the police or what department, any department that's going to work to get grants, to fulfill something that they need. I'm not going to mess around with that at all. And we cannot reduce it more because when they want to go in the future, they're not going to get this amount again, because it looks like they could make it without it, and that's not the case. When we did lose some police officers, we heard a lot from the city about getting these men and women back onto the department and getting people. So at this last hiring, we received three people who were all diverse, and that's exactly what was asked for, mostly by this council, when it comes to hiring new people. And so, I feel like this cut is just punitive for a grant, so I cannot vote for this. Thank you.
Counselor Elmer?
I have a question for the Finance Director. The $3 million.
Mike?
I have a question for the Finance Director. The line item before any reduction, the $3,613, yada, yada, is that, does that include the three new police officers?
So, the, the 3.533109 has already, already reflects a reduction in what was requested by the Police Department of $80,726. So, it doesn't, in a sense, reflect the full funding of the 34 officers in totality that was requested. It reflects a reduced number that the Finance Director reduced it by in anticipation of the grant, but also I did justify it by reconciling the steps, reviewing the incentives, and also the K-9. I reviewed the K-9 grant and the gifts and how they could be used, and some of that money I believed could be used in the budget. So that was my rationale for recommending those reductions that came off of the requests from the police. So if it were to be reduced additionally, it would be nearly, it would be over $200,000 being reduced.
Follow-up?
Yes.
So, the number of police officers that you used for your calculation included the three new officers?
Correct, yes. It was calculated on the full budget, the full 34 officers that have been funded in the budget year over year.
Thank you.
Counselor Disorga?
I would just like to say that we actually did the math on this. I've personally added this myself, as other Ways and Means members have. The current police budget is for 37 staff, 34 police officers, and a court administrator, an accounts manager, and a record admin person. The salary line items include appropriations for two lieutenants. We currently have one, but one, you know, will be moved up. Sergeant, six sergeants, five are filled. Four detective positions, two are filled, and 24 police officers. So fully funding all of that. By budgeting this way, it allows all of those vacant positions to be filled. Most municipalities receive 911 grants. The only other city in Massachusetts that received one of these COPS grants at the same time that we did is Chelsea. They, at the same time that we did, they received $375,000. And I looked at their budget, and I have a problem, I have a real problem with how we are doing the grants, because I don't think it's fair to appropriate for money that you are receiving. Their, what they pay their officers is similar to what we pay ours. And it was very clearly defined in their budget. Each officer, the city budgeted $133,869 for the COPS grant. That was $44,623 for each one of them. 75% of their salary was paid for by the grant. And then the city absorbed $14,874, you know, that was appropriated for, for the new officers' salaries. The total appropriations for that was $44,623. I actually have sat there and added these numbers together, added the entire budget, because it, for 37 people, with all of the incentives, longevity, the K-9 fund, overtime, charge pay, et cetera, et cetera. And the number for all of that is the number that is reflected here in salary and wages. So we can appropriate for that and then get the $125,000 and put that in the general fund. But we will be appropriating taxpayers for money that we are receiving. That's all. I, I'm in favor of the reduction because it actually allows for all of the staff to be there, and we're not taxing taxpayers for money that we will be getting or have been getting.
Counselor Bullock?
Can I ask a question? I think this is for Director Schindler. Maybe it's for Chief Hague, but the K-9 line item in the budget book of, I think it's 8312, that is the K-9 grant, but then there was, there was separate funds that were donated. There's a separate account for funds that were donated, but we can't allocate those into the budget. Is that correct?
There are two sources of funding in K-9. There's a grant and a gift. The gift funds are general funds that can be used for K-9 expenses, if I'm recalling them accurately. The other one is specifically for NICO, the K-9 NICO, and expenses related to NICO training and such expenses. So that's more restricted, so we can't use that. But we do have a general gift fund that we can, is just for K-9, for purposes to K-9. So whatever goes to K-9, we can use that, those funds.
And do we know the number that's in that current, currently in the gift account?
I think it's like 15 or 16,000. It's not a huge amount of money.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Lapinski?
Yeah, so I am going to vote in favor of this. But I want to speak to the Police Department budget overall. Because I'm imagining that there were some people who expected me to come in tonight and say that the police are terrible and I want to. And there's a sort of age-old expression that people who live in glass houses shouldn't throw stones. Given that I've had a fair amount of police officers over at my house
Point of Order, Counsel Lapinski, as long as you're bringing this back to the motion of the $125,000, I'll allow it. Okay?
Yep. So, my point is that I feel a little bit like I live in a glass house. They weren't all calls that I made. I'm not going to go through the whole history here, and I still think that our police are unnecessarily burdened with tasks that we shouldn't be giving them, and we have some work to do in the long term. But I'm not going to make a big point of that. I do think I agree with Counselor Disorga's rationale behind making the $125,000 cut. And I want to say one other thing, and this is something that the Chair of the Public Safety Commission brought up in public comment. Having to do with not reducing public safety in order to fund the schools, and my position on that is this. I think that our best source of public safety is good schools. I think specifically the programs.
Point of Order, this is going way, way off.
I'm explaining.
This is grandstanding. This has nothing to do with money.
I am not grandstanding. And I'm going to continue this point, and I'm going to wrap it up pretty soon, but we can go on and debate whether or not I'm allowed to have the point if you want to. The programs that are at risk with the reductions proposed by the mayor, I think are very specifically good guarantees that future generations will be safer, will feel safer, will have the tools to communicate without violence and without disruption to our society. So, when we make these cuts, we are making these cuts to invest in public safety and not to dispose of it. And thank you for interrupting me, Counselor Toronto. I'm sure that that point was not appreciated by anyone in the room.
All right, let's just keep this. I recognize Counselor Torrance. I recognized you. We're moving on. I have to make sure everyone's spoken once on this motion, and then I'll be back. Counselor Gulliver, I think you had your hand up. No? You're good?
No.
Is there anyone else that has not spoke, that wants to spoke, speak the first time? Counselor Healy.
So the finance director indicated that she saw about 80 grand of fluff in there. You're saying a little more, you're saying a little more that you find, you know, I think there should be some middle ground here. I think $125,000 is still damaging to the progress of the police department. You know, I would, I would rather see about 45 grand. And that would be the 80 plus the 45, and that would be 125. And I can live with that and vote in favor of that. But right now, I can't support the full 125. I think our police department has done a phenomenal job dealing with the situation they were put in with the budget cuts last year and coming up with contingencies. And the officers put in all this hard work and, and to penalize them from not being able to be promoted to sergeant, it just seems, seems like a unfair shake, in my opinion.
I would like to speak to this as the counselor, not the council president. I too like numbers, but not in the specifics that have been talked tonight. I think it's interesting that we went through the entire salary and we found $125,000, which just happens to be the exact amount that we talked about for the grant, which would mean that, is that really the overage, or was it an overage in total dollars? My problem with this whole piece of reducing this as 125 is this council worked for a long time to pass that grant, to get that COPS grant on the book. I was told specifically that this would jeopardize that grant by not being able to do our portion and our matching funds and all the things we did to receive this grant. If this is an accounting issue and not a money issue, I'm not in favor of voting for this whatsoever. Because we hired three great officers with this grant, who, the process was exceptional. We had a counselor that was involved in that process. And I believe that 125,000, if that $125,000 jeopardizes that program in any way that we can talk about the accounting, I think it's, it's a bad decision. And I still believe this is about accounting and not actual dollars. I'm not in favor of reducing it by 125,000. Has anyone not yet spoke to this?
I have not. This is Counsel O'Meow.
Yep.
Go ahead, Counsel.
O'Meow, okay. I think Counsel Lapinski's offer of 125 is, is acceptable, only because it, it doesn't go over the, the amount that Counsel Disorga has come up with in her figures in terms of not having a working police department. We'll have that, we'll, we'll have that even without the 125. So I think part of the community still needs to heal. They're, they're still calling for some justification. And they don't feel like that is being registered by this, by this city committee. So I, I still feel like we need to take steps to, to justify and, and, and hold accountable because they hold us, they hold us accountable. We need to hold them accountable. And, and so I would, I would vote for the 125. Thank you.
All right.
Point of order, the 125 was actually not my motion, just to not take credit for someone else's work.
Counselor Forgé, you had a follow-up.
Sorry.
May I address the-
You can't just-
Chief Financial Officer? Thank you.
Sure.
I'm asking. I, I don't want to talk about any of the other grants right now. I just want to talk about the COPS grant at this point. So would you explain to us how this COPS grant is received? And how it is accounted for? And how it is transferred so that it can be of use in the police department? I'd really appreciate that. Thank you.
Sure. So the, the three officers have been, were hired around the end of March, early April. So quarterly, we submit reports and we get the reimbursements for the actual costs that are eligible, that we submit on a declining basis. So we expect this year it will be 75%, and then next year 50, and then the following year 25. But because we've just hired the officers and we actually haven't submit, submitted even our first quarterly report and received our first allotment, you know, we don't know exactly how the COPS program is going to be implemented. Again, it depends on the, the actual cost. They're only reimbursing our actual costs and then add a certain percentage, less than 100%. So, and, and those costs could also include fringe. So when those funds are received into the community, then the, the account then is transferred over the fund, the officers, whatever's charged is then charged to the grant, once the funds are received.
May I have a follow-up, please? All right. So when the revenue is, I want to get this very clear. So when the revenue is received by the city, how does that revenue get to the police department?
It doesn't go into the police department. The, the items in the police budget that are funded through the grant are then removed from the police budget and moved into the grant. We never put the grant money in the operating budget. It always has to stay as, stay as a separate fund. And then we move the expenses into the grant fund.
So at this point, you're saying that the officers that are on, on duty now, that are being paid for by the grant, are being paid for out of the salary line item operating budget? And those expenses will be transferred back to the grant?
Correct.
Okay. And you're also saying that there was not any additional money that was put into the police operating budget? $125,000 is the question right here, to cover for those officers?
No, but the full amount, the, the police department intended to fund the 34 officers and the three administrative staff fully. And as I said, I had made some reductions initially. But there's no extra staff in there, just the staff that we normally fund.
Can I continue to follow up, please? We're talking about 34 officers, so that the number in, at this point is three being paid out of the grant. And one officer is being paid out of police appropriation. It's a replacement, it's a salary line item replacement for an officer that has left the police department in the previous fiscal, not fiscal year, in the previous calendar year. In other words, it's, there were a number of people who left the department and that this fourth position is being totally funded through appropriation to, as a replacement to an officer that left.
Correct. Only three positions are allocated to the grant.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you for your clarification.
Counselor Torrance.
I believe we talked about this previously, but didn't you say that these submissions are quarterly? So we would get reimbursement from the grant quarterly, correct?
The submissions, the, the reports are due quarterly. The timing of the actual receipt of the money, you don't know exactly when you get it. You know, you, you submit them and you get them within a, a certain amount of time. But I can't say, sometimes grantor agencies take a week, sometimes it takes six weeks to get the money after you get, you know, after you submit the report. So there will be no, once we have a, a history, a track record of submitting them, then we'll have a better understanding of when the monies will be received. But at this point, we, we don't know that.
Would it be fair to expect that, say, first and second quarter, and probably even third quarter, would be received in the same fiscal year that it's submitted?
Presumably. We, we try to, if at all possible, when we're looking at grant proceeds, we keep the fiscal year open until we get as many grant proceeds as we can. Because when those monies come in, if we haven't received a full amount to cover the costs, that gets, comes off of your free cash. So you have to get those grant proceeds. That's the other reason why you don't budget them, you don't appropriate them. Because it's, it, if you don't get all of them, then you, you know, you definitely will be in a bad position with your free cash.
Okay.
Was there another question for the director?
Yeah, I do, but Counsel Forgé had something.
I've been given the high sign. I have to let everybody else start.
Well, sometimes you answer my questions, so you go first.
Without objection, I'll recognize Counsel Forgé. Okay, go ahead, Counsel Forgé, if there was, we had no objection.
Okay. Again, I want to, I want to say, if the, the three officers are getting paid right now out of the police salary line item and the grants are not coming in on a timely basis, as you just mentioned, then technically, at the end of our fiscal year, we are going to show a, a negative in the police salary line items? Those grants have not been backfilled by the receipts, other feet of the grant?
That would be the case. Currently, we, again, we, we haven't put in our first request, but we, and also, I want to mention, the, the people we've hired, I believe one of them is at the academy. I believe one is, you know, one is on, on the street. But they're not all just, you know, right out on the street right now. They, they are in academy training. So that also affects what they're paid, what we put in for the reimbursement. So again, all that to be determined. We haven't even put in our first quarterly report for, in a request for reimbursement at this time. But we do have fourth quarter fiscal '23 costs that we need to recapture before we close out this year. Yes, through the grant.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Counselor Bullock, now, did that answer?
Yeah, that was helpful. I did read through the, after the Ways and Means meeting, the DOJ application. And it, it does say that they reimburse within 90 days. So hopefully, that will actually be the case. I have a question, I have a couple of questions. But one of my questions is about the $88,977.48 in ARPA funds that were allocated to public safety. Is that in this budget as well? Or is, was that allocations for, of ARPA funds put somewhere else? So-
What was the amount that you just said?
Yeah, the mayor allocated $88,977.48 in ARPA funds. I believe it was 5144, object 5144. And it's, it's underspent funds. So is that last year's ARPA funds, or is this current year ARPA funding?
So I'm just pulling it up.
Yep.
Yeah, we, we do have a motion on the table, just so everyone recognizes that piece.
Okay. So the, yes, there's $88,977.48 that was spent, and that was already spent. That was between police and fire, is my understanding. That was a, another allotment. But there has been an additional $200,000 allocated in ARPA funds to the police department for the MOU, for the third shift agreement that we had. So that was to be funded out of ARPA funds.
Yeah. Okay, this is, this is helpful. So I, I am going to support this $125,000. I, I believe, you know, the rationale that the Ways and Means Committee came up with. And even following your line, I don't know which way you were, which way you were swayed after the back and forth with the director just then. But I can see where we have some positions that are in flux, that are not fully being utilized because people are not fully up and running in their positions. There's like some flex in a budget, right? We saw that when we had the emergency meeting and when we had the police budget brought before us. This budget has a 12% increase. That is significant. We are looking at, if we're, if Ways and Means is wrong and the $125,000 reimbursement is already in this budget, which I looked at their math and I don't think they're wrong, that's, that's a 3.5% decrease. In, not even in the total budget, just in that line, just in the, just in the, that line. So, yeah, I'm, I'm going to support this. I think, you know, something saying like the K-9, the K-9 gift of $15,000, like what the PTO would do to get $15,000 in donations over the course of a year? I don't know. I don't think our PTO has ever raised, has raised that much in-
Are you suggesting, Counsel Bullock, at all, that the 125 is too high, based on those calculations, or it's appropriate?
No, I think it's completely appropriate. And I actually do think that the math that the Ways and Means team has done, and what I just heard from Director Schindler, has convinced me that the $125,000 reimbursement that we are going to receive from the COPS grant is not in this budget. And so what, what I believe I heard is that the budget is created to appropriately fund the department with the 34 officers and the extra, and not extra, and the three other staff as needed. And then, when the, when the $125,000, or whatever the reimbursement amount is, comes in, the $125,000 is what it would cost to fully staff those, all of those positions. When the reimbursement comes in, that is then brought into the police budget. And so this isn't a decrease. This is doing what we are doing in other areas of the budget, where we are moving money out of this budget and asking them to allocate it when the money comes in later in the year.
Counsel Healy.
Yeah, I'd just like to bring up a point that it is a 12% increase. But if you look at the fact that we cut 11% from last year's budget, it's really not a big, it's not a really big increase. $450,000 out of 3.6 billion is around, what? $360,000 would be 10%? Do math quick in my head. But all I'm saying is it's, it's a small, it's a small increase. When we already saw that, due to the decrease last year, we couldn't have a functional police force that had overnight coverage, right? So here, here we are in that conundrum again. And I don't think it's that big of an increase when you look at the statistics, right? It's, it's 2%. I, I can't support $125,000. It's, it's just not going to work for me. And I feel like you're going to just put us in a bad situation again. I would just ask that you just rethink that thought, everybody, clearly. I understand you did your math. Math doesn't lie, right? But we saw what happened when we went down this rabbit hole last year. And I just think we're making two consecutive bad decisions by hurting the police force. That's it.
I'd just like to speak as a counselor. I would have to agree with Counselor Healy. I'm not confident enough to think that this math, I talked to department heads, I, I talked to, and they said this would impact the staff if this was cut because it's already figured in. I do not want to repeat what we repeated in getting these three new officers hired and having coverage by our own police department again. I'm not willing to jeopardize that. I just don't want to go down that path again. I don't think it's a threat. I don't think it's, it's in that vein at all. I believe the numbers are correct in that that's what it's going to cost to run the police department at the level that my constituents told me they want to be supported by the police. So I still am going to vote no on this. Counsel Gulliver.
I'm not one to typically call the question, but I'm just getting the sense of the council. And I'm wondering if everyone who's spoken, who wants to speak has spoken, and if this is the time to take a vote.
We've-
Yes.
So-
Motion's been made.
I'll move to call the question.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to call the question. All those in favor? Of calling a question?
Aye.
And a roll call on the motion.
Roll call on the motion. And now we are, can you just tell us this is substantial impact- impact, could we have a reminder of what we're voting for?
So if you want to reduce the police department's salary and wages line by 125,000, you would vote yes, if you do not want the reduction to occur, you would vote no. Counselor Goleb?
Yes.
Counselor Disorga?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Bullock?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Lapienski?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Healy?
No.
Counselor Elmer?
No.
Vice President Forgji?
No.
Counselor Ricketts?
No.
Counselor Torondo?
Yes.
Does the President wish to vote?
Yes, no.
The motion passes by majority.
Counselor Disorga?
Police expenditures, 278,800. Total police, do the math.
I got it if you want it.
Go ahead.
3,686,909.
Parking enforcement, 41,600, parking enforcement expenditures, 105,600, total parking enforcement, 147,200, dispatch center salary and wages, 714,698. There was a motion to reduce this, which was unanimously passed, to reduce this by the 911 grant amount, we received 97,500 in grant funding, the chief said that he needed 10,000 for an item that I can't remember, so we motioned to reduce the salary and wages in the dispatch center by the grant amount of 87,500, if there was a motion for that would be.
I'd move to reduce the dispatch salary and wages from 714,698 to 627,198.
Second.
So the motion's been made and seconded to reduce the line by 87.5, so, let me ask, Counselor Disorga?
Can I pass, may I pass out something that Ways and Means had to the other non-Ways and Means members that shows this?
You can't, but she can.
Okay, because this is actually what we were talking about, I put people's names on it, for people that didn't have it yet, okay, and, oops, I put their names at the top, if you don't have one, you could share it, this could go to Counselor Bullock. Yeah, it could go to Counselor Bullock.
So Counselor Disorga, in your rationale, from Ways and Means?
So it's the same rationale as the last time, but you can see this clearly, on, this is a copy of the North Hampton budget, I wondered for a long time why our dispatch budget was so much higher, but as you can see, off to the right, they account for the grant funding, the 911 grants typically go towards salaries, we get them the very last day of the year, or, or the very end of the year, we received 97.5, and you can see clearly, North Hampton has 12 dispatchers, two of them are paid by grant funding, and then they appropriate for the rest of the money, which is actually, perhaps I should have passed that around before when we were doing the, the COPS grant, but I didn't have one that showed that, so, it is fully funding that budget, except we are receiving this money, so we should not be appropriating taxpayers for money that we already have, so.
Counselor Disorga, in your rationale from the Ways and Means, when you read the motion, or the amount, you said that the chief had asked for 10,000 less, and then it almost indicated that they recognized that this 87.5 was not needed, is that what you're saying, is that they, they recognized that that was an error?
Uh, no, 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 Counselor Forgji made, that, that's not correct, Counselor Forgji made a recommendation to go down 10,000, because the chief had talked about 10,000 for something he was gonna buy, we actually said 97.5, and, um, the grant actually allows you to buy chairs, but you can only buy chairs every five years, and we just bought chairs, so we didn't need that, but there was one thing it was gonna use it for, I, I don't actually remember what it was, and the rest of it, we're gonna put towards salary, so we're taking it out of the salary and wage line item.
I guess I'm just missing one piece, that, so did the police department agree that this, in this case, that the money comes in differently, they did not, there's no acceptance of this grant any different than the other one, I'm just wondering why the rationale came from, for a different opinion on how one was accepted unanimously, and one was dissenting if the same concern was posted.
I think perhaps it's because there was only one other city that had a COPS grant, everybody gets these 911 grants, or, almost every municipality gets those, and you can see how the accounting is done, I'm not really sure why there was a difference, I felt they were the same.
Thank you, that Counselor Disorga's absolutely correct, when we addressed this issue, we, I did make the motion to leave 10,000 in the COPS grant, and I did vote with my fellow Ways and Means members to approve this cut, however, I have changed my mind, and the reason I have changed my mind on this particular piece, is if you go back to the actual budget book, um, where it does detail the, the breakout of, uh, this would be 120 if you've got your budget book here, it does talk about the breakout of all the salary line items, and the one line item that really stands out to me is the dispatch overtime line item, which was budgeted for next year to be 45,000, so if you have got a staff of 10 dispatchers, I think 45,000, and it's an extremely low overtime budget, given the nature of public safety, and the amount of 24/7 coverage you need for dispatchers, upon further, you know, digging and explanations and everything else at this point, I really think, once again, and I don't mean to be critical of our financial staff or anything like that, I do think that what has been shown to the councilists tonight, and what was shown to us at Ways and Means, is really, in my opinion, the absolute correct way to do the accounting for that particular grant, what I have found out since, is that the grant money was going into police overtime, general fund overtime line item, and then being charged and moved back from there, I do not think that's a good accounting practice, I do think that it should be placed in the overtime dispatch line for emergency dispatch going forward, that would be my recommendation, to make the accounting very clean, or, if it was so noted that they didn't need the overtime, then they should identify an employee, or perhaps an employee and a half, or a portion of a second employee, who would be, whose salary would be charged directly to the grant, so again, I'm saying that I think that this is really an issue caused by, there's not a lot of transparency as to how the monies move, and I would suggest that in future, those things be made, now, I'll advocate for the restoration of the 97.5, or the 87.5, excuse me, at this point, or whatever the figure is, I would, I would move that, I would ask for that restoration to be given back to overtime dispatch, the problem is that there are contractual obligations, if they do not receive a refill back into, or funneling, giving them the grant money back into that appropriation, in other words, you're just telling them to take it bottom line, 87.5, or whatever that figure is, I'm sorry, I don't have it, but you're asking them to take that, minus that, from the total operating budget of emergency dispatch, I don't see where that's a good policy to get into, I think that it, that it is their grant, and they should not be penalized, also, the 9/11 grant is applied for, right now, they're waiting, uh, other, you know, kind of quarterly pieces to the overtime, coming in on that grant, in the summer, they will say how much they used in that grant, and they will apply for that money, that will not come in until next fiscal year, so, once again, I think you're shorting this budget, I think that we can always say, we want to move the money to someplace else, to the schools, wherever it wants to be, wants to go, but I do think we're doing a disservice to our dispatch people by removing this money, and making them go bottom line, it actually shorts them, and that will, in my opinion, affect how many people they can hire, it will also affect the shifts that have been set up by contract, thank you very much.
Director Schindler, can I follow up on that with you? It was explained to me, similar to what Counselor Forgji just said, that the actual overtime line for dispatch was something like 110,000, but in the budgeting, it was budgeted for 40,000, leaving an 80,000 or thereabouts gap, that what they've been doing is replacing that 80,000 that's spent in the overtime with that grant, so it comes in, so, if we were to cut this, and we could not put that into that line, we would be shorting overtime by the amount of that grant, because we only have a few places we can put that grant, because it has to go into dispatch, and it only can go into salary and wages and, um, equipment, is, is that correct, that we're showing the, not the actual amount that we spend for the overtime line in a fiscal year?
Yes, that is my understanding, that the chief has been reducing the overtime line, when the grant is, when the grant funds are, again, are they, the reports are submitted, and the grants are received, then money from the dispatch budget is moved out of dispatch and to the grant, and then that frees up the money that he's been using for the overtime.
Counselor Disorga?
I'd just like to say that if you all looked at munis, you would see none of that, okay, I mean, the numbers actually don't lie, and if you looked at what you have in front of you, um, that, North Hampton has 12 dispatchers, and their budget is less than ours, and, but if you look at our munis, you see none of this happening, so, I would suggest that, I feel very strongly about that, I, on both of these, we're fully funding these budgets, and we are not appropriating for money that we are receiving, that 97.5 was in a fund, we actually asked about that in April, it's not, that hasn't been used, it was in a separate fund, and I thought, okay, I, I just, I can't see appropriating money for money that we have or are receiving.
Counselor Bullock?
Yeah, this is, this is similar where we, like, this, for, my understanding of this is it's like a cash flow issue, and it, I agree that when I looked at the munis reports that were sent to us, you can't see this happening, and so there is this level of transparency that we're lacking in our budget process, and I don't know if it's across departments, and we just didn't catch it within every department this year, because there, because every department has grants, or, like, pretty much every department has grants, and so, when I went over the school budget, um, with the superintendent and the business manager, like, I could clearly see the, the column for grants, um, and, you know, what's, what's, I think what's hard for me to digest in this, is that when you, like, there's extra allocations from ARPA funding, both years, that, that the police department has received, or is going to receive, this 200,000 for third shift, when that was a, a problem of our own making, that we could have hired, we could have got on hiring sooner, we could have, we could have accepted the grant earlier, you know, other municipalities are putting ARPA funding towards direct-to-family programming, and, and things that are prevention measures, and so, I just, I have a really hard time with the lack of transparency in this, not, not voting for the reduction, because when I did look at the actual munis reports, I could not see where this was happening.
Okay, there was one more hand over here, and then Counselor Lapienski, did someone want to speak from this, Counselor Lapienski?
Um, so, my question's actually been resolved, thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this motion?
Roll call, please.
None?
The motion on the floor is to reduce 87,500 from dispatch salary and wages, a yes vote would reduce the amount, a no vote would leave it as proposed. Counselor Goleb?
Yes.
Counselor Disorga?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Bullock?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Lapienski?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo? Counselor Mayo, you may be on mute. Thank you. Counselor Healy?
No.
Counselor Elmer?
No.
Counselor Forgji?
No.
Counselor Ricketts?
No.
Counselor Torondo?
Yes.
Does the President wish to vote?
Yes, no.
The motion passes by majority.
Total dispatch, do you have the figure, go ahead.
631,198.
Six, okay. Fire salary and wages, 2,957,860. Fire expenditures, 281,386. Total fire, 3,939,246.
Sorry, 3,239.
Wait, oh, sorry, 3,2?
Yep.
3 million, oh, that looked like a nine, 3,239,246. Building inspector salary and wages, 225,466, 466. Building inspector expenditures, 8,300. Total building inspector, 233,766. Plumbing and wire inspections, 101,400. Sealer of weights and measures, 25,000. Animal inspector, 3,000. Emergency management, 7,500, using this. Emerg, emergency management, 90, emergency management expenditures, 15,600. Total emergency management, 23,100. Animal control officer, 29,424. Animal control office, 1,700. Total animal control. Total animal control, total animal control officer, thirty-one thousand one hundred and twenty-four dollars. Total public safety, do we have a total? Go ahead.
Total public safety, eight million one hundred and twenty-one thousand nine hundred and forty-three dollars.
Thank you. Greenfield Public.
I think we may have missed the civil defense line.
Oh, yeah.
You just, where?
Right above animal control.
Under expenditure, under emergency management, next line, total civil defense.
Seven thousand five hundred?
Twenty-three thousand one hundred.
I don't see that on there, though.
No. No, it's not on the, it's not on the packet that we're following along on.
It's.
Okay. Ways and Means recommendations, tick on civil defense after emergency management expenditures, total public defense, twenty-three thousand one hundred. It's missing from the budget.
Chief?
Yeah, it's the same thing. It's the same amount. It was just the old accounting system, it was called the total, it's not already.
Oh, yeah, that was just the total. Sorry.
So that's, that's a total. Thanks for that clarification.
Thank you.
Without.
It was the total of the salary, wages, and expenditures of emergency management.
So we're good with that line, Counselor Bullock?
So it's total emergency management?
Yes. Without objection, the council will consider the remainder of the operating budget and come back to the schools. If there's an objection, someone can make a motion.
No objection.
No objection that we're going to skip schools and come back to it.
Okay. On with Public Works, operating budget salary and wages, one million seven hundred and eighty-six thousand seven hundred and fourteen dollars.
Point of order, what page?
Depends on, yeah.
I'm, I'm reading from this packet, I don't know what page you're on. This is the packet that I was given by the clerk.
If you're in the budget book, it's one forty-nine and beyond.
Okay. Operating budget expenditures for Public Works, seven hundred and eleven thou, seven hundred and eleven thousand and fifty dollars. Total operating budget, two million four hundred and ninety-seven thousand seven hundred and sixty-four dollars. Snow and ice removal, salary and wages, seventy-three thousand. Snow and ice removal expenditures, one hundred and forty-four thousand eight hundred dollars. Total snow and ice removal, two hundred and seventeen thousand eight hundred dollars. Total Public Works, two million seven hundred and fifteen thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars.
Continue.
Street cleaning, forty thousand. Trash disposal fees, four hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. Cemetery salaries and wages, zero. Cemetery expenditures, eight thousand dollars. Total cemeteries, eight thousand. Total other DPW expenditures, four hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. Health inspector salary and wages, two hundred and twenty-five thousand nine hundred and ten dollars. Health inspection services expenditures, twenty-nine thousand seven hundred dollars. Total.
I have a comment to make on that department, please. So, I just want to say for the record that the health director did put in for an additional position in her request. That position was cut by the mayor's office and by the finance director. And while it's clear that we don't have enough money to add a lot of positions, it's also clear that that department is heavily overburdened, and we should be taking that seriously while we're addressing the same needs of other departments, such as the schools and the police.
Thank, thank you. We did, actually, that came up at Ways and Means, thank you, thank you. Total health inspection services, two hundred and fifty-five thousand six hundred and ten. Council on Aging salary and wages, one hundred and sixty-five thousand two hundred and twenty. Council on Aging expenditures, four thousand four hundred. Total Council on Aging, one hundred and sixty-nine thousand six hundred and twenty. Veteran Services salary and wages, two hundred and thirty-eight thousand one hundred and ninety-nine. Veteran Services expenditures, two hundred and ninety-two thousand seven hundred, four hundred and ten dollars. Total Veteran Services, five hundred and thirty thousand six hundred and nine dollars. Mayor's Task Force Against Domestic Violence, five hundred dollars. Human Rights Commission, five hundred dollars. Commission on Disability Access, five hundred dollars. Youth Commission, fifteen hundred dollars. Total Human Services, nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
Point of order. So for the Youth Commission, I don't believe there's anyone on that currently, right now. I think I may be the only one, so I make a motion that we zero that out for now.
Second. The motion's been made in second, it's up for discussion.
I don't want to discuss this.
Yeah, we got to clarify that.
Yeah. I think that this part of our budget is really telling. This, this was shocking to me last year, that, that this is the amount of money we're putting towards domestic violence prevention, the Human Rights Commission, disability access and Youth Commission. These are literally the most vulnerable people in our community, and this is the amount of money that we're allocating in our city budget to it. If we have a youth commission that doesn't function, we need to fund it and invest in it to function. We have a problem in this city. I was in a meeting today in our city with the Boston Federal Reserve, who has an inclusive communities initiative focusing on transparent municipal budgeting. And they want to invest in rural communities, right? They, they see it a problem that we've had a twenty-year decline in, in population here and in birth rates in the western part of the state. And so, the fact that we just continue to not fund these things, that we're giving five hundred dollars towards domestic violence prevention, and I think we gave twenty-five thousand to the Interfaith Council, anyone who works in human services know what the Interfaith Council does. It's basically the only place you can get cash if you need it in an emergency as a family in Franklin County. And this is a problem. Like, this is where prevention, prevention would happen in our city. So I just, honestly, I don't think it would matter if we defunded all of these things, because we're throwing pennies at them. But every time I've looked at the budget book last year and this year, I've just been so unhappy that this is how we're funding it, that none of our ARPA funds are going towards this. It's, it's really not okay, and it's not how we are going to have safety within this community at all, and how we're going to increase people wanting to live here.
Mayor, we have a governor, do we have a youth commission?
I can't speak to the youth commission, well, I can speak, we do not. These are boards and commissions. This amount of money is the amount of money that these boards and commissions are being given to do programs, to do, in, in the past.
Point of order. Was a question asked?
I'm just explaining why. This is, this is not funding departments. This is funding, this is funding boards and commissions. It's giving them a budget. Not every board and commission has a budget. This is what they can do.
Right, let's, let's rep.
To conduct public service.
Point of order, the mayor was asked a yes or no question. We're done with the mayor for now.
No, well, first, you can't determine that, but second, let me say that I asked a question. Mayor, do we have a youth commission? I'm, I'm sorry to back that question back up, but is there an active youth commission?
Again, the youth commission is a board that requires volunteers to step forward.
Do we have an active board that's stepping forward? Or?
No, we do not.
Is not functioning at this point?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
But if you, if I may, if you don't fund it, how are they going to step forward?
Let, let us, let's, us handle that. I think, let me talk as a counselor for a second. I think I support Counselor Ricketts in saying that if we re, we resurrect the youth commission, that we get asked for funding, and that we support it when we get requests for a financial order for fifteen hundred dollars to support them, or what they need to take. Counselor Bullock?
Yeah, so, as a follow-up, this isn't on the list that was put out by the city as a board and commission that's being recruited for. So, how is anyone to know that the youth commission is recruiting when it's not on the post that says, "We're recruiting for these boards and commissions"?
I don't want to wander too much off of the motion to reduce by fifteen hundred dollars, but.
I just want to, I just want to say that, like, what kind of programs can you run for five hundred dollars a year? You can't pay anyone food, transportation, like, all of childcare if someone was going to be on one of these boards. There's no, any type of program that you would want to put in or survey you would want to conduct with the community, you can't do that for five hundred dollars. And so I understand that these are boards or commissions, that we need volunteers to step up, because we have a largely volunteer-run government in our city. But we are not adequately funding these things in any way, shape, or form, and we are also not adequately putting time and energy within our city departments to make them happen either.
Counselor Golub.
I just want to second every single word that Counselor Bullock just said. And when I read this, I, I don't know if the word is, there's like an iron, there's a, it starts with the statement, "Youth are our future," exclamation mark. If youth are our future, then this is something we need to be investing in, and I understand that if the outreach hasn't happened and something is to be resurrected, then let's resurrect it, but we don't resurrect something by defunding it. And I would absolutely oppose this motion, and it did not come from Ways and Means.
Any other discussion on this? Counselor Gilmore?
Yeah, I would beg to differ. I would say if we have a board that doesn't even have any active members and we're giving money to it, that doesn't feel like a transparent budgeting process to me. That feels like money that's padding the budget that's going to be turned back and spent somewhere else where there isn't oversight. So, if we're not going to have people working on projects, we shouldn't be funding anything. That's, that becomes a slush fund at that point.
Counselor Disorga.
I serve on disability access, and I'm the treasurer of disability access, and we get a stipend for five hundred dollars every year. And every year since I've been on it, we've turned it in, other than one year. We had one program that, we had somebody come out and it was three hundred dollars. So, I, and, like, for one, like, one month or two, I was on the, the Mayor's Task Force Against Domestic Violence, and I think that they actually, I had a, I had a conflict with grandchildren, so I stayed on it for a short time, but they were trying to use their stipend in the one, it's a, it's an annual event that they have, and that's what they use the money for. And I think these, the thing is, it's, in my opinion, it's not money that's going towards actually all of disability access issues or all of domestic violence issues, it's actually the stipend for the committee. And I know, like I said, every year, I thought of cutting, well, I didn't think of cutting it myself, I would have discussed it with other disability access members, but we never use it, because we don't, we don't need it. So, I actually would agree with the youth commission cut, and I think that you have to put more into a big program.
Counselor Forgé.
I support, I support Counselor Ricketts' motion at this point. I think we should do it, and I think if the youth commission becomes active, we can just go back, I mean, the mayor can find some funding and some, it's not going to be a tremendous amount of money, but I do think at this point, if there's no commission, then basically it's going to close to free cash. And I really don't like the idea of funding line items that are over and over by a great amount or are not being used, because then, in my opinion, it's like you're appropriating free cash, and that's illegal. Thank you.
To follow up on Counselor Forgé, said, if the commission is put back together and they come to us and ask for the financial order for fifteen hundred thousand or two thousand dollars or whatever, I don't think this, I can't speak for you, because I never know what you're all thinking anymore, but I can imagine that they would not turn it down. And, and I say, you know, that's where it should come from. Let's not leave it in there and hope that we're going to do it. Let's do it and then fund it, as we have been saying in other departments. Counselor Ricketts, did you have a follow-up?
This all started, because I thought I was doing something very nice. So, the youth commission might not be active in stuff right now, but we do have a recreation department and we have schools. So, these are places that children can get it. And I want to be very careful about everything that Counselor Bullock just said, is because people like the disability access and stuff. These commissions and boards do really great work. Because they don't need the money, let's not talk about them in such a negative way, because these people give all their time and show up to these meetings every single month. When I was on Human Rights Commission and we had five hundred dollars, we showed movies, we did a downtown fair, and other businesses, you know, helped and gave us funds for things. But these boards and commissions can all do good works, we just need more people. These are not so you can pay for childcare or you get a stipend for what you do. You volunteer your time. And I know that Counselor Disorga, being on disability access, really cares about businesses like banks and different places, making sure there's access for people in wheelchairs and stuff. So they're not looking for the money to buy anything, they're just making sure they take care of everybody who is disabled. So, I hope this discussion makes everybody look to the website and, and look at all the boards and commissions we have right now, and I hope people want to join some of it, because it is fulfilling. I was on Human Rights Commission for twenty-one years, so.
Counselor Bullock.
We used the five hundred dollars to do plaques for people, so, thank you.
Counselor Bullock, you can, you were addressed personally, so feel free to follow up.
Yeah, I'm just going to follow up and say that our Council on Aging receives a hundred and sixty-five thousand two hundred and twenty dollars. I wanted to fund them higher last year and give them the social worker that I think is absolutely necessary for people in our community. So I hope if our youth commission comes back and these kids organize themselves and they request more than fifteen hundred dollars, that we allocate it, because there is a disparity there, and we have a problem in Franklin County where we do not have enough youth in the, in our city, right? We have low enrollment. And I think something like a youth commission is really important.
Any other discussion on this? Seeing.
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Hello, Mr. Chair, I, speaking, I also sit on the Commission for Disability Access, and, you know, there's two sources of funding that we get from there. It's, there's, there's the typical five hundred dollar stipend that we get, or not stipend, but amount of money that we use for the program. But there's also, we get access to the parking, parking ticket money for the, for the entire city. And that we put that money towards a project for the CPA to vote on that would benefit all of Greenfield for disabled, for disabled people to use the Bachi, Bachi courses. And we, we noticed that there was not a, an opportunity for disability, or people with disabilities to use that facility, and we donated our money towards that, so.
And you're going to bring this back to the youth commission, correct?
Are, are we bringing the balance of the money back to the youth?
No, I'm just saying that the motion on the floor is about the youth commission, so I just have to get you to bring it back to the youth commission, or I have to say thank you.
Okay, Wilson, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone? Is there anyone else I've missed on this? All in favor of reducing... Okay, and Counselor Toranzo, can you read the real motion?
The motion would be to reduce the Youth Commission line to zero.
Roll call vote.
Counselor Gollum?
No.
Counselor Disorga?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Bullock?
No.
Counselor Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Lipinski?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Healy?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Vice President Forgé?
Yes.
Counselor Ricketts?
Yes.
Counselor Toranzo?
Yes.
Would the president like to vote?
Yes, yes.
The motion passes by majority.
Counselor Disorga.
Library, okay. So, total human services is nine, I have 957339. Is that what you have? Okay. Libraries salary and wages, $661,471. We've had a reduction on this of $24,526. Do you want the rationale? It was a new half position. We'll be hiring a new library director. And this is the second position that we're hiring that we're going to offer the new person, $10,000 more or something like that than the person who was, that we had and served so wonderfully for so many years. But there's also another, it was a half position. And we were eyeing carefully any new positions that were going to come in. And perhaps this might be something that's needed further along the line. But I think that was, it was, that was either four in favor and one against. I think we might have had one member against this cut. Go ahead.
Could I, could I just?
Are you done with your explanation? And I'll recognize Counselor Forgé. Counselor Forgé?
Counselor Disorga, didn't we cut?
Mike?
We cut money from the salary and wage line item because of the new library director piece. And so, this figure right here, is that a correct figure? This is just the salary for the part-time position for the children's librarian. But then we cut the salary and wage line item because of the director's pay. Did we cut that by $15,000? Okay?
Counselor Disorga, Counselor Gollum, something, I see who's responding.
Not remembering that like that, but I'm going to check with my other, the other four. Okay, I don't remember that that way.
Counselor Gollum, do you have something on this?
Yep. So, I don't have the precise numbers with me. However, there is an, the line that we're talking about is 5111. It was increased about $55,000. And that $55,000 represents three things. It represents 3% raises for the current staff, an increase in the library director position. The current library director is retiring. And they did a study of equivalent libraries in the region and determined that an equitable pay raise and a competitive pay raise for a library director required an increase of about $10,000 in the library director. So, we've got the 3% raises, the increase in the library director salary. And the remainder was about $24,000, which would be used to hire a children's librarian in the evenings and on the weekends. And the proposal from Ways and Means is to cut the equivalent amount of that children's librarian. That's me speaking for Ways and Means and I could also speak for myself. And, well, I will speak for Ways and Means by saying that the vote was four in support of this cut and one abstention. I was the abstention and I can add to that.
We can take, you can answer that now as the counselor versus Ways and Means explanation.
Yeah, I will say that I abstained from that when I hadn't seen the entire budget. And I was, I also abstained from that when I was approaching the budget with an eye for cutting new positions. I didn't want to cut any existing staff. And so, I saw this as a new position. However, I will be voting against this cut. I believe that it's incredibly important for children and parents in our community to have a children's librarian on the weekends and on the evenings. And I don't believe that anyone who's been reaching out to us would actually want us to make this cut.
Is there anyone else? Because I'd like to speak to this, but I'll recognize. I just want to, I want to agree with Counselor Gollum. I'm going to go on a different track. I mentioned this earlier. We have just built the Taj Mahal of libraries in Greenfield. And if we're not going to put the infrastructure inside it, I've been hearing, you confuse me sometimes, I got to tell you. We're talking about strengthening children and making sure children, and there's nothing for them to do and we got to give them activities. And then we don't want a librarian on evenings and weekends, which are probably the most vulnerable time. I understand, we're not saying it's this amount of money for that line. We can go back into that discussion. But I just see, you have a premier facility that we're opening and we're going to try to recruit a new librarian that's going to have a lot more to look at and deal with because it's a bigger facility, it should have more activities. I think the people that are working there deserve to get a raise to handle that project because we wanted the staff to be treated fairly and be as excited as we are about that building. I've heard more split things, whether we need it or we didn't need it. I don't want to go down that path. I'm just saying, we got it. Now, we should support it. And that'll be my personal position. Counselor Toranzo. Counselor Toranzo following Counselor Lipinski.
So, I just basically want to echo what President Gwynne just said. And to just sort of loop back to a couple hours ago, we talked about not wanting to create something and then not maintain it and staff it. And I think this is a good example of how I was not involved in the discussion of whether the library was a good idea or not. But it certainly doesn't seem like a good idea to have it empty or to have it where nobody can help people find the right stuff. So, I'm going to vote against this cut as well.
Counselor Toranzo.
Yes, I will also vote against this cut. When we were going through this before, this was one that we kind of had as, almost like an asterisk as we were putting together the rest of it. And to be honest, I think we just didn't go back afterwards and kind of, once we got our, you know, the total where we were at. So, I mean, I know that, I think I'm going to talk to Kate about this afterwards, that we were, at some point, that, we kind of forgot about that. But, yeah, so I'll be voting no for this, even though when we had this come through, we did have that on there.
Anyone like to speak to this motion? Counselor Ricketts?
Yeah, I'm going to vote no.
Oh, there is no motion. We don't have a motion. We're in discussion still.
I'm just letting people know, so...
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, but I thought we had a motion too. There is no motion. Would someone like to make a motion?
We don't need one, right?
Well, no, we don't need one. If we're going to leave it alone, we don't need one. But if someone wants to cut it, they need to make a motion. Okay, that was fun. We didn't need to do it. Move on.
Library expenditures, $131,000 for a total of $792,471. Recreation salary and wages, $232,515. Recreation expenditures, $4,600. Total recreation, $237,115. Historical commission, $1,100. Total culture and recreation, $1,036,86.
Meeting continued to May 18th at 6:30 PM.
Oh, wait. Can we, can we vote?
There's no reduction there, is there?
No, can we make a motion to finish because we're so close?
Because we're so close that we don't want to come back.
It's 11 o'clock. That is, that's how it's posted. That's what we have to follow. We have to adjourn at 11 PM.
Point of order, don't we have to make a motion?
We made a motion at the last meeting.
We made a motion at the last, no, we didn't.
Can't we make a motion to continue?
No.
Yes.
It's posted that it ends at 11?
It is.
Why do you think we were so mad about roll call every second?
Yeah, it's posted to end at 11 PM.
Because you don't want people to know where you stand.
But can we make a motion to continue, even though it's posted? We're so close.
The meeting has been posted to adjourn at 11 PM.
Point of, we need, we need a motion to continue the meeting to May 18th at 6:30 PM. But this meeting ended at 11. What's that? We're not adjourning. We're continuing. I need a motion.
I move to make a motion to continue this meeting May...
6:30.
Tomorrow, May 17th at 6:30. 18th, May 18th at 6:30 PM at the Johnson.
Motion's been made. Second, all in favor? Opposed? Do we have a vote on this? All in favor?